It is being recorded. Fantastic. Well, welcome to the January 28th Council Special Meeting Retreat as we talk about the Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP. We're going to do a little bit of an introduction here. We've got an opportunity for public comment. Then we're going to go into a conversation about, you know, what's our vision on this? What goals do we want to accomplish with rethinking the CIP? And then a conversation about what should be in the CIP. Talk about our plans. We've got a break then at that point. A conversation about the kind of criteria and process for rethinking the CIP, followed by a lunch break. Conversation about funding and timeline. And then getting into our work plan review, as well as public comments at the end. We're hoping to be done by 2:00 p.m. We're going to keep moving on this as needed. So Zach, did you have some comments about kind of why we're doing this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. So yeah, we wanted to take a moment to step back for a minute too and just talk about why we're here. So, you know, last year, we sat down right here and we took a big step back to think ahead, to think strategically, to think intentionally. And the result of that was one of the best budget seasons we've had in a really long time. Similarly, some of you were around on council or participating in other ways when our community took a big step back to set a new vision, a new mission, to set new goals for Issaquah's future that guide every decision that we make. And that would become our strategic plan. I'd also argue that the incredible work going on to update Title 18 is a big step back to think big. So all this to say that when the community and the council and the administration come together to take a step back, to consider where we are, to consider where we ought to be, history tells us that we can create something amazing, that we can have a lasting impact on the community by way of our plans, by way of being intentional. So we think it's time to do that again. This time to reexamine how we invest in infrastructure. And as we all know, it's a long game. From meetings like these to ribbon cuttings, capital improvements that we prioritize and fund take years, sometimes decades. And that's why it's so important to get this right. So we've got a lot of good stuff planned today. I'm really excited and not sure.
Andrea, did you have kind of staff introductory comments?
Actually, Wally does.
Yeah. You're not going to hear too much from me today, but you're going to hear at least on top. So thank you for coming together. We will talk a little later on toward the end about the rest of the year. But this is the first of three council work plan workshops that we have scheduled. We've done two the last few years. We wanted to add a third because of the importance of the capital planning. And I think Deputy Council President really did a great job of kind of providing the context of the importance of that. But from the administration's standpoint, first and foremost, we wanted to say we hear you. That over the last couple of years, I think we have heard the frustration of some members of the council saying that we have asked our boards and commissions to do a whole variety of long-range plans. And I think there's been the feeling that not all of the projects, initiatives, programs that have been identified in those long-range plans have had an opportunity to be folded into our capital planning process. So we wanted to take this opportunity at the very beginning of the calendar year to say that we would like to see a process. And I think you would also like to see a process that has a much greater focus on the projects and initiatives in those plans. That we then also have a significant involvement with our boards and commissions as we go through this process to check in, make sure the evaluation criteria for proposed projects mesh with their thinking, that once there are projects identified, that that meshes with their thinking. So what you will hear from the administration today through Andrew's presentations, hopefully, is their response that needs those challenges. We've been talking about rethinking the capital plan. You know, it's really more of a refinement. We are already investing a lot of resources in capital budget, capital projects. And that has started coming out of the pandemic. I think it will continue in a significant way as we move forward. But we want to be responsive to you. We want to be responsive to the community. We want to be responsive to the needs that the physical infrastructure of the city has. So this meeting really, I think, is meant to be a lighting of a fuse to say that the struggles we've had over the last several years on many, many fronts, we're turning that corner and now are really focused on accomplishing a lot moving forward. The one caveat in all of this is resources. There's a lot on our plate. We all want, from a staff and administration's perspective, to deliver for you, the city council, for the larger community on the needs and desires that you have. But to do that takes a lot of different kinds of resources. It takes plain old cash. And we are fortunate, coming out of the pandemic, that we had a lot of resources, not only of our own savings, but also from the federal government. And so there are a lot of active projects currently being done. We remain concerned that the resources necessary on the staff side to accomplish those projects remain challenged. It's difficult markets, hire people. We are trying to hire engineers and project staff at certain levels of experience. And quite honestly, they're just not there. And so we've made the decision instead to hire the best and brightest that we can find and then work with them on the levels of experience managing projects, working on projects. And so that divide is an important one to note because we can't just ask a lot of these individuals to take a project and run and do it like you've done projects in previous jobs. In some cases, while we have very smart and talented staff, they don't have that kind of experience. So that's an additional layer of energy that's required there. Also, the community. We have, you know, a small but dedicated group of community members who are relentless in wanting connection and information about capital projects. And if we are going to continue that level of responsiveness, that also takes time and energy. Over many years, we relied on project engineers who are busy designing the project, working with consultants also then to spend many hours responding to emails from community members. We don't think that makes sense moving forward. We need our project engineers to do engineering, not necessarily community engagement. So we're looking at ways to address that moving forward. And then finally, the biggest resource of all is additional dollars to make these projects happen. And to do it in a way, to find those dollars in a way that's responsible, that connects back with the community. And one of the things you will hear from us today is that we believe the time has come that we need to go to the voters of Issaquah and say, "We need additional help through financial resources to support some of these initiatives." So we're excited to be here. We spent a lot of time being ready to talk today about the capital planning process. We truly, as a staff and the administration, believe this is so incredibly important to the future of this community. People move here because of this natural beauty of Issaquah. People move here because of the infrastructure, the parks, the streets, all the things that make up this community. That's what we have going for us. And so if the economy changes, if work styles change, if housing options change, we still want to remain a very attractive place for people to be. And to do that is a lot of investment in capital dollars. And so we're committed to do that with really all of you and the community, our boards and commissions as good partners. So at the end of the day, what we do have is something people are excited about, feel good about, and really moves this community forward. So we're really excited to be here and talk about all this.
Great. So taking that idea forward, you kind of look back and you go, "But we've had a CIP. But we've identified the projects." And there, you know, you've certainly heard City Minister Bob Kowetz talk about how we've also done planning with our boards and commissions. And those plans and projects that are in those plans haven't really had a process for making it into the CIP. So that was one of the major reasons to do this rethinking. The other is, you know, we need to have a set of projects in a six-year period that we really want to accomplish, that the plan selection and the criteria for why those projects are in the CIP is both transparent and realistic. Realistic for what we can get done, but also realistic for what our community needs at this point. That it's not just dictated by the cash-on-hand availability. And then that third part is the funding. So we have a clear plan to accomplish these projects. You heard that coming out of the Community Funding Task Force. And so this is really that next step of that process. So at this point, I was going to see if the mayor wanted any introductory comments as coming in.
Just in time.
Do you want to say anything introductory? Otherwise, we're going to go into public comment.
Okay. Well, I want to apologize for being late. I snoozed the first alarm, slept through second alarm, and my third alarm was off skiing. I just woke up. Probably have pull marks on my face. I'm really excited that you've decided to tackle this and challenge. It's been interesting serving with TOLA for now over a dozen years, watching how this process has sort of been one that hasn't evolved as much as others. So looking very forward to council's conversation today and to the retreat.
Fantastic. Thanks. Yes, go get food. So at this point, Clerk, I would ask, do we have, we don't have anybody in the public here. We have wonderful staff who is sitting over here. But do we have any public on the... Oh, obviously, we wouldn't have anybody online because we're recording.
No, no, the WebEx channel is open. We had someone really briefly join us, but they're not here now.
Okay. Okay, so...
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
What does success look like today?
Success for today looks like... So one of the statements or one of the processes we're going to go through is creating kind of a goals and outcomes chart, like the Title 18, so that we have an idea of what this process looks like at the end point, when it's successful. So one is setting up the stage for this next set of work. The other is, I think, staff would like to come away with the idea that we have council buy-in on where the window of projects are that we should be looking at so that they can go back, do more work on, you know, what's the viability of this? Do we have the staff resources to do it? So that then they can come back to both the boards and commissions and council at various touchpoints and be able to say, okay, this is the landscape of the projects out there, and then work through the criteria. So I think those are the two big things. The third one is really introducing the idea of the funding timelines. But there's future conversations to really get to a true buy-in on that. Anything else that you would add, Wally or Andrea? Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Yeah, indeed. And towards that idea, you know, I will apologize a little bit that we don't have all of the staff presentations in the packet, both for council and the public. But we really wanted this to be council-led. We wanted it to be something where we weren't necessarily reacting to or already going down the process as staff has had to do to be prepared for this. But then we were really thinking about it from kind of the baseline of why are we rethinking this? And what should the outcomes be? So we decided to not have the staff presentations in there so that we could really do it based on those ideas. So I think at this point, the next part, we're on to Part C, which is the Capital Improvement Plan: Visioning, Goals, and Outcome Brainstorming Activity. Andrea, do you want to kick us off with presentation? Or do you have anything to kind of talk through what the ideas there?
So I think, not really. I think we have a number of goals that the administration has identified. We can go over those after the activity that council does in the spirit of making sure this is council-led and you're not reacting to something from the administration. So I welcome you to kick us off.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, give you guys the opportunity. Okay, so Zach, are you going to want to use the SharePoint? And have that presented? Or do you want to go scribble on the board?
Should we ask council?
Do you guys care?
Yeah, we have a couple of options in terms of taking notes. At the last retreat that we did here, remember I took some notes kind of on the whiteboard so everyone could see it? We also kind of have a shared document that we could just start putting in it. Is it important for you all to kind of see it while we're having this conversation on the board? Just so I can go stand there and write on?
Well, I think you can also present it.
Or we could, yeah, put that one too. Okay, then we'll just do that.
Okay. Yeah. So I was thinking we would start off with, you know, I think the administration has done a good job of kind of saying, hey, these are the three things that we've heard from council, the boards and commissions, and the community that are causing us to want to rethink the CIP and the plan and the projects in there. So going through some of those as a way to... So how familiar is everybody with the Title 18 Goals and Outcomes Chart? No? Okay, so let me take a step back there then. Yeah, I know, you're familiar. Thanks. So when the Title 18 process started out, we, as council, created an ad hoc to kind of work with staff on that beginning point. One of the things that the ad hoc group did was to kind of say, hey, we need to define the scope of this project because taking on Title 18 in our land use code could have just continued on and on and on. So we wanted to set a set of goals of, when we come out of this process, if we've done these things, we will see this as a success. And so the columns of that chart are things like, okay, the goal. One of the goals for Title 18 was that our forested hillsides were protected. And then there were possible actions. And then, or objectives, actions, and... Yeah, desired outcomes. And that kind of traces it through the process. What we didn't do as the ad hoc was define all of those. What we were able to do was say, these are the problems, and maybe these are the outcomes. And then we let staff fill in the rest of that. So I think our goal here for the next 45 or so minutes is really to make sure we have all of the goals or problem statements kind of listed out and then fill in some of those outcomes. Yeah. Do you want, do you want to just start over there?
Yeah, I'll start there.
For some reason, I'm sharing it, but it won't. And I can see it, but it's not showing up on the screen.
No worries. We are flexible, absolutely. So, yeah. And so if you want to kind of take one column, which is kind of the goals or the problem statements, and then another column that is kind of the outcomes or objectives, I think is really the focus that we would want there.
I think I'll just add to, think of this really as a brain dump for you guys, so like, you can reorganize and restructure things to make it fit into goals, problems, desired outcomes at a later date too. And staff, I'm sure, will want that as well.
Yeah. So I think as an example, I'll start with one of the things that the administration has said, which is, hey, we've, projects from the boards and commissions, their plans don't really have a path for inclusion to the CIP. So from both the administration and my standpoint, I would say that is one of the problems or goals with the current process, which is we have a CIP, which has a bunch of projects in there, but then we create, say, the Master Mobility Plan. And all of the items in the Master Mobility Plan aren't, don't have a path to be included in the CIP. So if you would put that down as the first problem.
Can I say it as a positive instead of a negative?
Sure.
That there's a path for suggestions from boards and commissions to make it into the CIP.
Yeah, so I would think of that as kind of one of the outcomes. Yeah. And then while Zach is writing, Victoria?
Well, I like the analogy or the comparison to the goals from the Title 18 update. And we did, there was an ad hoc, but then we also went to the full council and full council weighed in early in the process. And here, we're weighing in the full council from the beginning, which I think is great. In that goals and outcomes, we have umbrella goals, which work for everything. And then we have specific problems that we wanted to address. And I think that could probably serve us well because some of this is process and some of this is probably specific to infrastructure that needs to get done. And so one of them actually is provide a transparent code update process that allows for groups and individuals to engage in the process. That's one of our umbrella goals for Title 18. And I think that's basically what we're seeing here. And I think they're pretty much all applicable. Just maybe rearrange them. There's also address current laws and best practices, make it easier to understand and organize and provide, realign with our community aspirations for the city as provided in adopted plans. So all of those are...
Okay. So what I'm hearing from that is not only do we need some of these specific problems and goals and outcomes, but also thinking about the overall process and having some umbrella goals that kind of reflect something that, you know, we want things to reflect the best practices and all of that. Okay. So I'm going to maybe note that down as just umbrella goals and say that that's something for staff to kind of fill in if possible. Chris?
Thank you. So one of the things that I would like to see us accomplish is that the CIP becomes doable, that it's not a planning document, it's actually a path to executing document so that we do complete stuff and that we complete stuff every year. And so...
So talk through that a little bit more so that we can maybe put it in a statement here because there's a lot to that. There's the concept of, you know, we make significant progress on our things annually. Yeah.
Yeah, and so the... So my frustration with the CIP, I'll start it there and then we can figure out what this goal looks like, is we talk about a lot of stuff and we plan a lot of stuff and we do nothing. And we get very, very few things on the CIP come off, the CIP, because they're done. And I really feel strongly that we need to say, if we're only going to do one thing this year, let's just do one thing and get it done, instead of having 17 things going on and everything is just kind of motoring along for years. So we just, it's a focus thing. We focus on a couple of successes every year, a couple of targets every year, and we bring things to closure every year.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, you know, it's a regulatory requirement to the plan. I'm wondering if you're thinking about maybe a process within your budget process, which is your execution, where there's better tracking of what has council approved in the budget and where that project is? Because the plan is a plan.
Well, no, and I think planning is super great. I spent most of my life as a planner. And so, oh my God. So, no, planning is absolutely essential, but planning without execution is not, is not good. So it's not that. It's not about tracking where we are in the process. It's about making a commitment to get things done. It's about saying, we're going to get some stuff done. That's all I'm driving for.
Yeah. So would you put that down under goals as like making progress? Or...
I guess I'm tired of progress. I want completions. And so we can't get it, get something... I just want to know why we, you know, I've been on council for five years. We put the stoplight in at Providence Point. Hooray. I don't think I can point anything major to else that we've done. So it's just, you know, kind of, how do we make sure we get stuff done? How do we not only make progress, because... But, well, maybe this is it. Thank you. It's making progress towards very specific milestones. And then there's accountability to hitting those milestones. And that series of milestones gets us to completion.
Yeah. So progress less completion. I'm going to go TOLA, Victoria, Barb.
I'm going to...
Put it where... Oh, sorry.
I'm going to sort of... I'm going to sort of riff off of what the mayor said. Some of these things are multi-year, right? And I would hate to, I mean, I know Chris isn't saying only do things that you can accomplish in a year. But, you know, I understand, you know, let's dot some i's and cross some t's. The way I think of it is in terms of having more explicit milestones that people are held to. I feel like we don't, I feel like I often say like, what's the next milestone on this project? What's the next milestone on this project? And it may well be the administration has all those and they just don't bring them to us. But I would, on these capital projects, I would be happy if it was a three-year project to hear, here's what we're going to do in the first half of '23, here's the second half of '23, here's the first half of '24, here's the second half of '24. And then hold those accountable. Say, we told you we were going to have this done at the end of June. Here's where we're at. And that, to me, it wouldn't be the entirety of what you're talking about. But for me, it would be a big step forward. So putting, so having some mechanism, some cadence of milestones and accountability to the council for major capital projects would be, would be a good thing.
I'm going to restate that under the problems and goals as having clarity of milestones and accountability.
For, you know, certainly back on those milestones, is my thought.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks. And I don't think that's that far from what I was suggesting.
Yeah, exactly. I'm kind of tying those two together as the problem or goal, as well as the objective. So the objective or the desired outcome that we achieve by having the clarity of milestones and the accountability is that we can see progress toward completion of items.
And it's not, sometimes people will be like, give me the next 12 weeks and give me a milestone for each of those weeks. It's none of that, right? For me, if you could even do it twice a year on these big projects, right? An example might be our long-term plan for Confluence Park, right? And what are the major, happier milestones towards what we're doing for Confluence Park?
Okay.
So one of my problems that I feel we have is that we don't have a systematic evaluation across the whole CIP or one that's really visible and possible for council or for the public to engage in to see why certain projects are evaluated or why certain projects are happening, certain projects aren't. So I think a systematic evaluation that would lead to a prioritization would be great. And in my understanding, and in my, like, looking at what some other CIPs for other cities do, they do this systematic evaluation and a prioritization, like with the matrix, that it says, this one we need to do because state law says we have to do it. And then, and then council doesn't have to talk about that one because it's going to, it's prioritized because it has to be done. Or this one is done for safety. And then we can talk about the merits of that as a safety project. But then we can kind of have a place to grab onto for those discussions. And then we can see things prioritized differently, potentially based on the needs of the community. So that's really my, I think that was one of my, one of my thoughts also as council president, because I was council president when we did this process. And I felt like our conversations didn't really continue where they left off.[1682.72] And part of that was because we didn't have a sort of systematic evaluation that we could then reevaluate the next year and continue to prioritize based on the needs of the community for our next conversation. We kind of started from this huge list of things, some of which could get done, some of which, you know, are going to be on the back burner for a long time, kind of tried to grapple with the magnitude of all of them, but then didn't have a systematic way of evaluating. And then that did a carryover and we did the whole thing again.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just got a prescription or, so you're gonna have to read up whatever you wrote.
Systematic evaluation missing, which I think is good.
Okay, so.
Maybe, maybe also prioritization.
Yeah, criteria and prioritization could be even a separate line. Okay, Barb and Russell.
Okay, I have two things that I want to focus on. First of all, Chris's statements are exactly what I was thinking of is that we just, in addition to completing the line at Providence Point, we put a whole bunch of money into payment management program. We put a whole bunch of money into the concrete management program. And I bet we are the only people in Issaquah that know that that happened. We just need to do a better job of communicating and taking it out of the CIP. We can't expect people to go to the CIP and understand what it is that we're accomplishing and planning and accomplishing. So in my mind, and this is very specific, so please, just, you know, I'm just giving you an example. What if we sent out a postcard every six months that said, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, you know, things that we've done in the area of transportation or in the CIP? And as, as Tola said, you know, those are the things that the public will hold as accountable for because that's, it's right in front of them, they don't have to go look for it. It's, you know, it's something very easy. You pull it out of the CIP, here are the five things we're actually going to plan to get done in 2024, 2023, whatever. So, and then my second is, in terms of goals, process goals, this is the way I wrote it. Communicate in ways that inform, teach, and engage community members. And I think if we don't wrap communication into our CIP, then we just aren't really achieving our goals because the public doesn't understand what we've done for them, what we plan to do for them, and where we're also, where we don't have the resources to do the things for them. So, so that would be, I think that's a goal that we, a process goal that we need to include. And can I have a quick thing?
It's called inform.
Russ apparently thought he said it very well.
I really like that, inform, teach, and what?
Engage.
Engage.
Those are three different levels of, and teaching to me implies a deeper conversation than just informing.
I wrote that over here thinking that as like a, a little going.
Yeah, yeah.
Like a good.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay. Oh, I've got a whole list, so don't even worry. Okay, Russell.
Me too, I'll go.
I wanted to expand a little bit on the mayor's comment about the budget. We went with a two-year budget so that we can have a little bit of long-range planning in our, in our project. So, Chris, I agree that we should watch these projects on a yearly basis to make sure that we're doing what we need to do. But perhaps we should step back a little bit and put it in a two-year context so the budget matches up with what we're tracking a little bit better. So that each year we can say, this is what we've put in the budget, this is where we are with the project. And then the onus is on council to learn about those projects and communicate with the administration so that when people come to talk to us and say, you know, I really would like a stoplight, well, those recent ones, I would really like some speed bumps right outside of Issaquah Valley Elementary. And so we can either say that's not on the CIP or that is on the CIP and it's going to be done X year. And so that we're more knowledgeable about what projects are coming down and when they're going to get done, but put it in a two-year context so it matches up the lines with the budget looking for. And then we are moving all together with our documents and our information going forward.
So let me ask a question there. The CIP is inherently a six-year document and lists out when projects would be accomplished within that six year, where the first two years are more certain because they're in the budget. So what are you proposing that would be different?
Like more certainty, long-term? I just think that when we're, well, I'll speak for myself, when I'm out in the community and people ask, when will the transit terminus be done? I can't refer them to a document that kind of gives us a plan to say, it's going to be done in 2043 when sound transit gets here. I'm just using an extreme example because we really don't know where, where that's going to be. But if I can say with more certainty that this is on a plan, this is when it's going to get done, or I can tell the public that it is going to get done this year because we have this commitment, I think the council will do a better job of communicating these things and people will understand projects are going to get done. They see that the city is doing well with all the different pieces and that their voice is being heard and something is going to get done that they're concerned about in a specific year or time period. Kind of like, no one wrote anything down that I said, it's perfect.
Oh, you're right, you're right.
People are listening.
Oh, we need, we need that AI thing that's out now, that GPT and we just talked.
It's right our CIP. Yeah. Victoria, you're up next. Oh, and then Chris, yeah.
The other thing would be a history of how long, so I think that we have all these, we have a lot of projects that have been on a, more like a wish list. And I think that probably needs to be separated so we have a more realistic look at what is planned on getting done, separated from a wish list. And part of that is also the history. And there are new council members, there are new members of the community who enter the conversation at different points. But some of these projects on the wish list have been there for a long time. I think, you know, more than a decade, some of them. So like having the history of how long it's been on the CIP, but then also the separation of these aspirational items and items that we actually think we are able to get done. The other problem.
And I see if I can restate that effectively so that we all know we're hearing the same thing. So saying that the CIP is supposed to be things that we will accomplish in six years, but we also don't want to lose track of those other things that are maybe on a wish list that we don't see ourselves necessarily completing in six years, but we want to keep on in case we can get grant funding or something like that, but also have the history of how long they've been there or why. Yes? Okay.
How do I incorporate wish, I think that's a good.
I think, I mean, the problem is maybe that we have different, I don't know.
Yeah.
The, we need a realistic.
Yeah, maybe differentiating between a realistic, accomplishable and the whole set of projects. So like, I'll give you an example. Bellevue has their planning commission create, I think it's like a 12-year or a 13-year list of transportation projects and then they boil it down to the CIP and then it comes into the budget. And so not being, not losing track of those, because it's important to have items on the CIP because we can't get federal and state funding if they're not there.
Yes, and that makes sense to put them further out too. But then I would want to see how long they've been on that further out list.
Yeah.
The other thing is geographic, so the problem would be uneven geographic coverage of projects. We have some neighborhoods that, you know, different neighborhoods have different infrastructure currently, but some of them, there are some projects on there that have been there for a long time, you know, Squawk Mountain.
Thank you very much.
And.
Yeah.
Sidewalk, Squawk, which I.
So I'm gonna say, not only do we want to be able to visualize and track where projects are happening, but maybe have a little bit of an equity component in there.
Yeah, and it's really, it gets, in this specific example, it's about the established neighborhoods versus the growing neighborhoods. And it's because of a funding issue with doing these projects in the established neighborhoods, there's some new developments, there are new fees coming in and they still have infrastructure needs. So that's the, the issue.
So maybe as a problem, older established neighborhoods don't have, you know, these development-related projects that improve their infrastructure. And so, Mayor?
Just gonna add on to that too. It's pretty obvious if you live in Squawk Mountain or in Old Town that they were built using different street standards, that the right-of-ways are different sizes. And so what kind of improvements can you put in those neighborhoods? Because you can't necessarily put what you put in a house or a house. So what does parity or equity look like when you have a completely different landscape? Smaller right-of-way, you know, I mean, one of the big issues, I think, with the Squawk Mountain Trail is the amount of property we have. So how to frame it so that they're getting the outcome, although it may not look exactly like what is the end outcome.
You need somebody else to take over my hand for a sec. Just need to shake out.
Yeah, equitable outcome, I like that.
Yeah, equitable outcome, not exact same in different neighborhoods.
Equitable, equitable.
Yeah.
Oh, I love some of the posters that are out there. And in my mind, if I turn that into like a street standard, what I'm seeing doesn't look the same. It's not equal, but it functions. It's the community that same.
Yeah. Okay, shake out your hands, shake it out, shake it out. Chris?
So I'm, I'm gonna just riff on Victoria in a big way, so, because I loved what you were saying. The, I'm circling back to having a method and standard for how we prioritize and transparency. The flip side of that is what are our constraints? What are our financial constraints, what are our staff constraints? What are our geographic constraints? Is that we understand our constraints as well as we do our desires? Because I think that's the, that's always pushed back and we do a better job of understanding what we want and not really do a good job of understanding what we, what the constraints are. And so that's, I think, part of where my underlying problem was rooted. The second thing is, in the parlance of good program management, there's this concept of a backlog of work. And that's what really, we've got a lot of stuff done in the CIP that really needs to be in a backlog. And then as we go through periodically, we're updating the CIP, you reprioritize your backlog of work. And that's, that's another thing we don't do. We just, we kind of just chunk it out there and we just keep pushing it forward without any intentionality about, oh, this one needs to move up in priority. So I don't know how to describe.
It's a backlog and reprioritization.
Yeah.
Let me riff back on your resource constraints. Because part of the problem I see with this is that I think many of the times we're only choosing projects for the CIP based on our cash availability. And so the Northwest Semamish multimodal project is a really good example of where staff kept coming back to us and saying, it can't be done, we don't have money for it, we shouldn't make progress on it, why do you want us to move forward? And we, as council, said, because it's a huge priority. We're doing the same thing, I think, with the Squawk Mountain sidewalks is the idea of there isn't funding for it and so it shouldn't be included. So my, one of my problems with the CIP is that it's based too much on funding capabilities and not enough on what we want to get done.
Can I ask that, can I? I think that's what you get, as Russell said, in your off year now, is that the plan is the project list, but those funding strategies, that's what you get to talk about in this off year. So for example, if you want to go out for a bond, you would be citing that in this year to fund some of those unfunded projects. So I think the plan is the plan and then this off year is your year to say, well, we either deal with the revenues we have or we talk about using our transportation benefit district, going for a levy lift lid or going to the bond. And that's why I think this is going to be fun, because you have your budget year and then you have this year. So I think you will now be able with this two-year budget to dedicate meaningful time to talk council-led revenue, how to do this. I think you're going to get that.
But first, for that concept, you need to have the CIP include those items that don't have a directed funding, because it's a priority of the community.
Right.
And so I would say as much as funding needs to be part of the criteria, it shouldn't be something that cuts off inclusion in the six-year plan or dictates when it happens.
Let me, let me.
Yeah, well, we're still riffing on this idea, give us a second.
No, I just wanted to say yes and, because, so there's, the funding is one constraint, but we also have others. And Wally talked a bit about, you know, the staff thing. And then, do we have the people to even do the project? Because the other thing we, we always gloss over is like, just go, go figure it out. You know, and it's just, you know, figure it out and figure it out doesn't always work. So we need to, and there are other constraints other than just the funding. And I agree with you, we put them on there and then we build the funding package. But when we're doing the evaluation about what we're going to do and when it's going to be done, you know, that's just a factor, you know, do we have the people to do it? Do we have the dollars to do it? Do we have the real estate to do it? And that also has to be factored into what goes on the plan, I think. That's, all right, and I'll be brief.
So would the outcomes factor in resource constraints?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Barb.
Well, I just was gonna say, I feel like there was a high meeting last night that we didn't know about because we're talking about it on my list. So, capacity. And I always feel like I'm the person that says, more people, more people, more people. But with Wally alluded to, you know, we want the engineers to do the engineering job and not have to be communicating all the time. That was my job at King County. As a community relations planner, I answered the phone, I took all the questions, I did all of that. It's, you need a person who, you have to have somebody in place who takes the communications piece. So one thing I'd like us to talk about is a CIP communications person adding that capacity. And then that does take the load off the engineers. But to be realistic about it, the engineers never completely get away with the communications piece. I mean, that, that just doesn't happen. But if you have a person who takes the phone calls and does all of that, takes a huge burden off of your engineering staff. And then the other thing that is right here on my list is transportation benefit district. So thank you to your colleague. But if we're going to talk about resources, it does start talking about how to be figuring that, that TBD and get that, you know, our conversation started at that point about how are we going to fund the projects on that list that we keep complaining don't get done. Well, we've got to go, I guess we have to be more aggressive about pulling out after new resources. So, there.
Okay, so restating, so maybe what I'm hearing is, in order to be a, it's not really a CIP problem so much as we need to be effectively staffed to accomplish the CIP, not only in the doers, but also the communicators. And then secondarily, that we are utilizing our available funding sources. Maybe utilizing more funding sources than we have historically.
We need more, I mean.
Yeah.
TBD would be actually bringing in new revenue.
Yes, yes. But toward that idea, you know, there are other new revenues, including councilman at bonds or.
Living with.
Yeah, the lift lift, you know, there's, there's lots of other opportunities which we as a council, because, or we as a city, have grown up very quickly from a small city to had a lot of development dollars that came in. And now we're kind of at this point where we have to go, okay, wait, we have a lot of huge obligations and we need the funding to accomplish that. So, yeah. Oh, that's fine. Zach, you want to add any? I'll review my list.
Russell, one, probably.
Do you have to need a write yours, say?
Oh, sure, Chris.
Teamwork.
Guest described, my caffeine though. Servileadership. So the first thing, the first thing that I wrote down as a problem is that we need to incorporate equity somehow into project selection. We kind of have that down somewhere, I think.
We have geographic equity, but.
I think, thinking about it more broadly too, I don't know how we do that, how we approach that. That seems like a very tall order and task to find how we do that, but it needs to be captured as a goal.
So could that be maybe factored into criteria for project selection?
If we're able to define it in a way that works and why, yeah, that could absolutely be a criteria.
Just a clarification on that. Well, can you describe what, what success, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm stealing from Tola, what success would look like if we did that? What would we have? I think that would help people kind of frame it too.
Well, there are a number of ways to think about equity. So first defining what that is and then based upon that, ensuring there are more equitable outcomes. So it could be racial equitable, racial equity outcomes. It could be based on the element of geography. It could be based on proximity to I-90 where you have.
And economic.
Yeah, definitely. So there are tons of, like, I feel like the definition in really kind of getting through, how do we actually define equity and make it a measurable thing? Will help us kind of have that discussion about what success looks like then. But yeah, no, something we have to be mindful of for the whole process. So anyways, equity has to be a part of this somehow.
Can I add a piece on equity, please? I think success, or what we would define success in our city was different than Seattle or another city in that we have.
in that we have, in our census data, we can see that we have pockets where we have lower income housing, where we have more individuals with disabilities, or seniors with more mobility issues. And so, we would then be able to look at, you know, blockways, pathways, proximity to parks, all of that. Yeah, all of that. And, and so, our definition is going to look very different than any other census.
Well, and it's going to look different now than it will in 14 years too. Because the makeup of ISCO will be different in years as well. So, doing this work now, I think, will help us for the future. I also wrote unclear all projects from strategic planning docs are incorporated. So, we've kind of already talked about that a little bit. I think part of that is honoring the work of reports and commissions and the vision of the plans that they've worked on. But the other part that I've been thinking about is, you know, can we be more active in pursuing emerging innovative solutions to infrastructure? So, like, what comes to mind is the pedestrian scramble or the hallway crosswalk that we put in. Like, are there other cutting-edge technologies or approaches that are being applied elsewhere that are dreaming about successful outcomes that we can try? Like, how can we be cutting-edge here in ISCO? So, I mean, one desire outcome is that, you know, that is an outcome. We are using innovative approaches to solve infrastructure problems. And, and again, a lot of that comes from our plans. So, I see that as kind of, as plans are incorporated into it. Because our plans are current, innovative approaches follow along. Many projects with minor and major challenges, as we've seen by reviewing the CIP document that was included in our packet. So, just being better from a council planning perspective, from an administrative perspective, to better anticipate what we can actually accomplish. Beth, I think we've already touched on that. Projects lack identified funding sources. We got into that. Definitely agree with Barb that, you know, utilizing available revenue sources to actually bring these projects to fruition is, is important. I think another part of this too is we have all these revenue tools available to us that we choose not to use for one reason or another. Why? And I think also just being clear about if we choose not to do it, why? Because otherwise, that's investment left on the table. And I think we got to be able to explain that to the community, why we choose not to do that. Because there are always costs and benefits to these decisions.
It also means that our current residents are bearing the burden of the costs rather than the future residents who will also benefit from those expenses.
Good point, yeah. Unclear, I've got one, two, three, four, five more. Unclear project selection criteria. So, we actually do have a project selection criteria matrix in the CIP. And I was kind of looking at that. But it only describes the projects that are in the CIP. So, I have no way of knowing projects that are on the future year list or that just aren't in the CIP. How do those compare to the projects that were selected to be in the CIP? So, it makes it difficult to determine priority or evaluating timing of projects when criteria are just for the projects in the CIP.
And toward that idea, I think we've also come up with, like, each of our plans, and I particularly look at the master mobility project or plan, has a clear set of criteria for transportation. And then, it created a ranking mechanism. But the CIP isn't just transportation. So, the idea of being able to prioritize spending across departments or, you know, kind of type of infrastructure is one of the problems that I don't think we currently, yeah.
Yeah, well, and the other, the other part of that point that I wanted to bring up is, you know, we do have the project selection criteria used listed in the CIP. It's addressing life and safety concerns, community priority confirmation, conformity to strategic plan goals, environmental impact, identified funding source, and then replacement or repair of existing infrastructure. So, I think another thing for us to consider is, does that current set of criteria support a particular vision of infrastructure investment? And is that aligned with our vision for infrastructure investment in the city too? I think that in and of itself could potentially be a meeting. So, just wanted to make sure that's on there. So, I think, yeah, we've got project selection criteria there. I also think it's unclear how community input is considered. So, I, well, I was thinking about this a few days ago. I was thinking about how Stacy always used to say, like, what would the stranger think? Or how, how do we bring the stranger into this work? And so, beyond hosting, I think we host a community meeting and then we have a public hearing. And there might even be two community meetings and then a public hearing for the CIP. You know, how do we capture broad, diverse community feedback? Bring that into how we think about project selection? And could the community survey potentially inform CIP development or other types of neighborhood-based surveys to that important that? So, I've just been kind of thinking about, yeah, exactly. Good, that's our outcome for the year. We're capturing broad community engagement and using that to determine how we evolve the CIP. All right, sorry, here we go. Are we running?
No, we're right on time at this point.
Spending, so we've kind of already talked a little bit about this with geographic distribution. But I feel like the CIP could, like, there's an opportunity to have spending breakdown summaries in there. I've noticed it in other cities. Whether it be maintenance versus new construction, so we can get a good sense of how we're spending on that, or neighborhood versus districts, so we have a good geographic understanding. So, anyways, yeah, just thinking, how could we present the data visually or differently within the document is something I've been thinking about. We also talked, let's see, we talked a little bit about milestones earlier. I was, I actually wrote, I don't have any thoughts on this, but I wrote products lack phasing. At least from a planning perspective in the document. I don't know if that's a good or a bad thing. I'm sure on the backend from, you know, us as policymakers, we don't get to see all, all the planning documents that staff have. But is there a benefit in some way of phasing out projects? So, they exist as multiple projects in the CIP and we can actually tick the box off. One, when an element is done or something like that. I don't know the answer to that. I just wanted to put that out there and staff up any thoughts, are you interested?
Well, let me riff on that a little bit. Because I think in our current CIP, sometimes the design of a project is separate from the actual construction. And sometimes they're together and we fund a project's design when we don't have funding for the actual build. And then, the design ends up being 10 or 20 years old by the time we get funding for that project. So, toward that idea, you know, better understanding the connection between design and construction, both in funding and tracking of projects. And again, I'm not sure whether it's better to have them separate so that we can check the box. But then, that risks having a 10-year-old design by the time we have funding for the actual project or whether it's better to have them connected and say, we don't spend money on design until we know we have the money for the actual project.
Which you can't get until you've finished the design.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, concept or design. We can have a project concept, but we typically don't spend design dollars until we.
I don't know that we have any 10-year-old designs.
Yeah, not designs.
We may have 10-year-old concepts, but not designs.
I was thinking of, I want to say it was like Newport.
That was, yeah, are there Newport designs?
Yeah.
I think, again, concept or design are different things.
Okay. Think in the engineering world, there's like a 30%, 60%, 9% full package. You're seeing a concept. So, maybe we're at 30%, but you're not seeing a design. We're not.
So, I put better understand the relationship between funding and design concept for those that are engineers.
Yes.
Just, you know, wanted to make sure, throw that out there too for staff to hear.
Yeah.
The last thing that I had is that the CIP, the document itself lacks like a compelling vision, like guiding principles. So, like, you look at our strategic planning documents and they paint a vision for what future, the future of ISCO looks like. The mobility master plan does, the central ISCO plan in particular does this really well in terms of describing what central ISCO looks and feels like to people who live there and use that space. So, I've been thinking, it, it would be good for our CIP to also reflect that to say, you know, what's the combined impact of our investment, of these investments in the community? What's the difference to the community? And what will ISCO look like in six years, 12 years, 20 years, 50 years? Just kind of thinking more long-term. And I think it'll be better for the community to be able to digest kind of what our infrastructure vision is by seeing kind of some narrative. I actually think that can be very easily accomplished in the mayor's letter. And, and just pulling in some of the language from our strategic planning documents and then talking about what the vision of council and the city is there. So, anyways, those are the problems I identify.
Right. Barb?
This is, so this is a one-on-one question. So, I reviewed the CIP preparation for this meeting. And are, are things put on the CIP by the date that they come in? I mean, there's no rhyme or reason to how, I mean, they are listed under categories. But if, again, you're a citizen who decides to look at the CIP and why is this one, you know, on page one and why is this one page five? And there's just no rhyme or reason for why things are the way they are, as far as I know. Now, there may be a good rhyme or reason that, that is the process of getting things on the CIP. But what Zach was saying, again, communication, communication. Someone just coming to look at the CIP, why are things listed the way they are? I can't figure it out myself. So, maybe we take that document and try to put it in a way that the community would better understand by, here are the projects, maybe it's by when they'll be completed. Like, here's our 2024 projects, here's our 2025 projects. Some other way of organizing it so it's a little bit more understandable for the public.
Yes.
Well, and I think we also have to come to grips that documents are outmoded. That, that, that documents are, as a way to communicate, are outmoded.
Yes, you're absolutely right.
And so, you all need to help us with that. Because our preference would be not to have a CIP document. Because of all the things you've talked about, that there should be a dashboard that you can pick based on, you know, streets, based on buildings, based on parks. Click into it, see projects, get project information that way that's more dynamic. You need to tell us if that's okay. And our preference is not to make the best document that we print out for you and put at your seats. Because that's not very cutting-edge.
Right.
We're talking cutting-edge. What is, is not a document at all, but really just a place that people can access information.
I think that's where it was good.
Yeah, Wally just took his five steps forward. Thank you.
I promised I was going to be quiet.
You stayed really well until Barb missed us.
I'll be back to be quiet.
Mr. Ray, Wally.
I was going, maybe go get more coffee, actually. We're running out. Maybe I'll just go make a Starbucks.
No, I was thinking about when you were talking about the postcards. Because we had a conversation in one of our committees about postcards and nobody, you know, everybody just throws away postcards. We get so much junk mail. So, Dale and the communications department are doing a great job rethinking our dashboards and, you know, and bringing in RGIS. And I think that that could be much more.
But, but the challenge is how do you get people to go look for it? And so, we're still, I mean, Autumn's still sitting up. She hasn't fallen off her chair yet, so that's good. Because she could spend the rest of the morning talking about postcards.
Yeah.
But, 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 but I think the administration does think that from time to time, we've got to poke people.
Yeah.
And so, we have to just figure out what the best way to do that. We did a postcard last year. Autumn and I went 16 rounds on that postcard about the strategic plan and we got very little connection from it. So, but it's an ongoing issue that we have, that no, no community is quite sorted out.
No, and I, and I totally agree. And I understand all postcard issues. So, it's, but it's something, like you said, to poke people. Because there's certain group and probably the majority that will come to the website. But then, there are people who will never come to the website. So, how do we, you know, how do we reach those folks as well? So, yeah, it doesn't have to be a postcard.
I will add, you guys hit most everything on my list. But one thing that just absolutely kills me is we don't have a clear understanding of what percentage we spend on maintenance versus new construction. We don't have a set of criteria that says we should accomplish this much maintenance before we do new build. So, I think maintenance in general is one of my problems, but also the prioritization of that in criteria and overall spending. So, if we're looking at this on how do we evaluate spending, one of the ways I would want to do that, or project selection, one of the ways I would want to do that is via a map. But another way I would want to do it is how much are we spending on maintenance and repair versus new construction? Chris?
I didn't get my hand up. This is fascinating. And I was just kind of thinking about what Wally was talking about with the dashboard and then Lindsay, where you were going. And, you know, maybe we need some clarity on why we're doing a CIP. I mean, there's still legal reasons why we're doing the CIP for funding. But we're supposed to maybe, you know, Zach, what you were saying, take a step back and ask the why. Why do we do this? Because I think that might help inform some of these discussions, you know. Is maintenance really a capital improvement? Like, maybe, kind of. And so, how does, but how does it bounce up against new construction? I mean, and, and so, the why about, here's the purpose of the CIP for the council. Here's the purpose of the CIP for the public. Here's the purpose of the CIP for city staff. So that we can make sure that we're, we're zeroing in on all of those different needs. Because I think everyone's got a different, different need for it.
Yeah. So, one of the problems right now is we have one document that speaks to multiple different stakeholders with different needs. So, yeah. Interesting. And then, one problem I have is just that we've started projects in the past. I just have one more, so I think you don't need, yeah. You can sprinkle it in. Yes, yeah. We've started projects in the past without a clear understanding of, like, leading them. I guess I kind of said that earlier with relationship to design money versus construction and the separation. So, I think that was all I had listed out. So.
That was awesome.
That was awesome.
That was a lot more than I thought we'd get through.
Yeah. So, what we've created is kind of a amalgamation of a list of some things that might be correctly categorized into a problem or goal, something that might be correctly categorized or not into an outcome or objective. What I'm hoping at this point though, is that we can give all of that to staff and have staff come forward with kind of a more coherent set of columns and connected actions and such.
And, and you're all happy with what you had for Title L.A. team. That, you touched on it at the very beginning of the discussion. But that kind of framework, exactly, Councilmember Hunt, kind of, you know, stole, stole the headline with, with the goal being somewhat generic. That could be.
Yeah, the umbrella goals, I think, are somewhat.
So, if we use that as our guide, and so, if it looks a lot like the Title L.A. team, well, that's not a bad thing in your mind.
Identical.
Actually, I've already created the SharePoint, you know, document for you.
This one is a confirm that it would be not for, it would look a lot, very much like, you know. Great.
Thank you. No. Okay. So, at this point, I think we, let's see. We're supposed to have 30 minutes for rethinking the plan, what's missing, et cetera. And then, we have a break.
Can I ask a quick operation question? We're running low on coffee. Are people looking to have fresh coffee in 30 minutes?
Yes.
There's coffee here.
Okay.
Wow, that was.
I was surprised. I just wanted to make sure.
It might not be great.
I mean, I'll, I'll go in some. Well, why don't I go? Just, can I, can I just go to Starbucks and will they give me a holder?
A top pot?
Yeah, or top pot.
A top pot, that's good.
Top pot?
Yep.
Anybody want a donut or anything? All right, I'll be back. Put the dark, put the dark one.
Yep.
The dark rose. Can I get that at Top Pot reliably or do I need to go to Starbucks? I don't know if they'll have both ones.
I have, I have gotten them there before.
I'll go to Starbucks.
Okay.
So one, one, one container will be enough, you think, for the break? Do you want me to preorder it?
No, that's okay. Okay, Wally, Wally, I would get a light and a dark.
A light and a dark?
I'll go through a large fraction of the dark myself. That's a good.
Okay. Thank you, Wally.
Are we that stimulating, Helen?
Yeah.
I just love coffee. That's a good call.
So at this point, we can either take our 15-minute break here or we can continue on with the next portion, which is the what's missing portion, which is supposed to be 30 minutes. Preferences?
Keep rolling.
Keep rolling. Okay, fantastic. So Andrea, do you have a staff presentation?
I do, thank you.
Fantastic.
Tish and I are working out file sharing and screen sharing.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I might have it.
Bless you. Thanks.
You know, it's not showing it here. I can see it in my back. That would be helpful. So let me, on here, see if I can see a trip.
So this is a good, I mean, it's called Ronde.
I might have a natural break here as we try to get to.
Okay, we're gonna take a 15-minute break. There we go.
So it's these guys that we introduced to bronze and Ronde and how this technology's gonna change the world, which is all okay for the guy accepting the chip stones to make it.
Yes.
Tish, maybe I'm, we, we, this is available. I know.
Yeah, I have a couple ideas. I mean, let's try to, Tish, can we put the, if we're on a break, can we just, yes.
We need to talk about.
But they're all around.
Okay. So this next section is all about, you know, what should be in the CIP and what compared to what currently is. So Andrea, take it away.
Thank you. And I really enjoyed, if we can go to the, whatever it's slide, Tisha, please, thanks. I really enjoyed that last exercise. It was very interesting. I think we're gonna see some things overlap. The administration has also come up with a couple of goals for this CIP update, but certainly learned a lot more from your past exercise, so thank you for that. We have, as it says here on this slide, we have brainstormed some of our own goals for this CIP update. The first is to provide more clarity over how projects are selected from city plans like the master mobility plan, the Issaquah Plan, the Action Plan, et cetera, and vetted into the CIP. We want to provide more clarity on that. And part of that includes our criteria that we use for these projects. The council president always talking about our criteria that we use. We want to clarify those criteria and how they're used to vet projects to get into the CIP. We also want to propose a realistic CIP, a CIP that we are confident we can accomplish given the resources that we have. So not just funding, but also looking at things like the global supply chain, which has really affected our projects over the past two years. Also looking at our staffing constraints and staffing capacity. We want to be able to staff for these capital projects that we just haven't really, we haven't really done that in a great way over the past few years. In addition, one of our goals is to implement the Community Capital Finance Task Force recommendations. And so we're gonna be talking a little bit about that. We don't want to start over with this CIP, but build on some of the work that was done last year and the feedback we've received from our community so far. Also, we want to address funding tools for facilities, for public safety really in 2023. And we're gonna talk more about that later on today. And then we want to devise a process where the boards and the commissions have a meaningful role. Our CIP update two years ago involved our boards, boards and commissions more than they have really been involved in this step of the process of this CIP. And we heard some feedback from them that wasn't really clear what their role was, there was some confusion. So we want to improve upon that this year with the lessons that we learned from last time. And we also have a goal of clarifying the role of the council committees. Last big CIP update that we did two years ago, we didn't have these set of committees. And so that's new, and thinking about what the relationship is with the committees, their role in oversight over what goes into the CIP, and then how that fits into this larger picture of community involvement and, and how we create the CIP. Bit way around with my placement and all these cameras of things. So, so that's, that's pretty much, so we already went through that activity with you. So now we want to talk about slide six. Thanks. So now we want to talk about what's, what's missing out of this CIP. What are some of the community needs outside of the adopted plans? And we're gonna turn to you and ask that question, but first I want to provide a little bit more information about what goes into the CIP. What are the sources for this CIP? What are the things that we consider? And next slide, please. And so hopefully you can see from this graphic, CIP is in the middle, and then we have a lot of different plans that feed into this CIP. So I mentioned some of them before, the master mobility plan, we have the water systems plan, we have the strategic plan, we have the sewer plan, the storm and surface water master plan. Some of these plans are coming to you in the next couple of months, by the way, before we finalize the CIP. So we're gonna be seeing some of these new things, including the transit plan. That's a new item that the city is working on this year. There's gonna be some items, some capital projects coming out of that plan early in advance to try to get into this year's CIP. Also, the ITS plan, Intelligent Transportation Systems, that's those smart signals that we were talking about a couple of years ago. We've started working on that plan. You're gonna see a lot more of that in the next two months. So I'm previewing to you some of the things coming ahead that you haven't seen yet that are going to be feeding into this CIP. So what happens is we look at, we create these plans. Facilities plan is another thing that we're working on right now that we're gonna have a lot more conversations about over the next couple of months that will feed into the CIP. So what typically happens with our process is we have something like the, the water systems plan or the master mobility plan, and they, we go through a public process to form these plans. We have community feedback along the way in creating these plans. We have board and commission involvement in creating these plans, and then they're adopted by council. So the board involvement, commission involvement, public involvement comes with the creation of each one of these plans. And then they come up with a list of capital projects and a list of policies that then we try to implement into the capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan, that acts as a funnel from all these other plans to prioritize into what can we get done in the next six years? And that's really the aim of this CIP, is to consolidate among all these other priorities of our core infrastructure, what can we get done in the next six years? And so I want to just provide clarity of where are the touchpoints for members of the public in terms of this CIP? And we're gonna talk a little bit later today about, okay, after all these plans are formed, now we're in this process, here we are at the beginning of this year trying to whittle it all down into what gets into the CIP and provide some more connections between each of those plans. Yes, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember had it first.
How often are these, I mean, I like the strategic plan is on a schedule that's not annual. So what's the refresh cadence on each of these plans?
It depends on the plan.
Okay. All right, just a second. Let me, let me ask a question more directly. Are there annual refreshes on some of these plans?
Um, I don't believe so, not annual.
Are there biannual refreshes on some of the plans?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think most of them are on like a four-year cycle, and I looked at our staff to.
Six.
From six.
Okay, all right. So they're not, not super dynamic and so they're not, we're not having to kind of react to them and kind of update the CIP on an annual, biannual basis?
Yeah.
Okay, interesting.
That's, that's correct. And I would say the TIP is the exception on here because the TIP is a component of the CIP. That's how we treat our transportation improvement plan, it's a component of our capital improvement plan, and that does have to be updated every year according to Washington state law. So we do look at that every year and, and council adopts a new TIP every year. Councilor Marks?
So I have a question about a plan that's not listed here or a topic that's not listed here and how it relates to this growth.
Yes.
Central Issaquah Plan, how we manage growth, how we have $400 million worth of infrastructure that we can't, that we can't get for the growth that's already occurred. How does that conversation relate to the products here which relate to going into the CIP?
So obviously growth is a, is a big topic and I think it's something that's somewhat addressed. Maybe it's not called out in that exact language, but in each of these plans, we would see where are the deficiencies in each of these systems to serve our population now and into the future. And so there's a very long list of these projects that we would like to get done. Some of these projects are also future looking, not just looking at existing conditions, but looking at, you know, down the road, how do we need to make sure that our infrastructure grows commensurate to the population growth in the community? Right? So I think it's, it's somewhat addressed in each one of these infrastructure plans.
Okay. I'm, I, I certainly think the 400 million that we don't yet, that we, that we haven't figured out how to pay for, I think is reflected in those plans. But I guess what I'm thinking of, I keep coming back to, this is, let me step aside for a second from the CIP, you know, thinking today about what our city is missing, I keep looking at Woodinville and Baho and their five-over-one, these great five-over-one projects that they've built in the last five years, right? Which is some of the vision that we have for the valley, 0% of which has been accomplished, right? When I think about the Central Issaquah Plan, all that vision, 0% of it has been accomplished as we've just gotten apartment building after apartment building after apartment building after apartment building, right? So my question would be, some of a CIP is to help proactively shape the things that we think are coming, right? And so do we have an ability with the CIP to help nudge things going forward in the directions that we want to see, which is growth in the valley and not growth on hillsides, particularly as the, as the state becomes more and more sensitive to the issues of how communities do growth? We have a great plan, how do we continue to execute on our plan?
So, so there's some of the, the market economics and what's, what's economically feasible to develop at this point in Issaquah. There's some challenges with real estate redevelopment in the Central Issaquah area that we can talk about, but your question's a little different.
And having seen it in Baho and Woodinville, I've grown skeptical when people tell us we can't do it.
Yeah.
Those, those.
Can I chime in on this one too?
Sure.
Some of the people who tell us they can't do it are developers though. And they, they talk about the difference in building construction types in Issaquah or like, you know, Costco had to build on piles. Well, that's just a no deal for a lot of these other guys. But we have actually, in the economic development group, provided a focus in Jen Davis Hay's job to actually pick the Central Issaquah Plan backup and identify the obstacles to development. And I think what you're gonna see on our list is some projects that need to be included. For example, we may have to invest in the community in a, you know, very large utility of some sort that eases the burden of costs on developers coming in because they just buy into a stormwater system that's already existing. So that is the focus of her job over the next year.
Okay.
Is to, to start to bring back to council those obstacles and the ways to mitigate some of them. And then you might see projects starting to show up in here that are those projects. But there are some in there now, like the Green Necklace and some of the parks ones that we can see on the ground, but there are utilities and soft soils and those kinds of stuff.
That's exactly the kind of stuff I'm talking about.
So, so this is why we restart your economic development, to really have Jen focused on the valley floor. So if they're not in there now, I think you'll start to see some. They're gonna show up on a list of obstacles.
Okay. I would love to have this conversation again in here and say, what did Jen find?
Please.
Thanks. Thanks for being on.
Yes, very exciting.
Andrea, you touched a little bit on public safety and how it interacts with CIP and the other capital projects that we're doing. I don't know, I'm just gonna throw out a question. I don't know what the answer is necessarily, but if there are any projects out there that improve public safety with respect to some of the things that we're seeing in Memphis or the George Floyd incident, I think that we need to really communicate that those are the types of things that we're doing to improve the quality of life for everyone in town. You know, and I don't know what the, the project might be and we can toss it around and see if there's something that makes sense, but, but if we do have something that's, that's out there or the council reaches a consensus that something might be appropriate for that, I think we need to communicate that to our, our community as well.
That's great and, and thank you for that. We're gonna talk a lot more about that later on today after lunch. But, you know, one of the things that I would just say right now is that we, in the past couple of years, have hired a whole human services team that does more, you know, direct work with our police force. And there are often a different office, but I would say it's not the best for integrated work. And so there's, there's some ways that I think we can provide for more for that team to do, you know, to better support that team and what they do.
Great, thank you.
So that brings up for me, you know, if I look on the main sources for the CIP, there's nothing about public safety because, and, and other areas of the city, like say our IT, where we don't necessarily have a public-facing plan. So how do you pull together those other projects?
Yeah. It, it's a great question. So, so one of the things on here is the facilities plan. So when we talk about public safety, what I'm referring to is east side fire and rescue, municipal court, and the police, and their, their facilities and capital-related infrastructure. So we don't quite have a facilities plan yet, the way that we have a master mobility plan, for example, and it's something that Autumn's team is, is starting to work on. That's something that we're hoping to shape up and do more work on that this year. But we are looking across the needs at those, generally those kind of three sections and what their capital needs are. My next slide goes over what's, what's not in here and what you might find in this CIP. And then we'll ask the question of council of what other priorities do, do you think that we should make sure to include that have not been mentioned today or were not addressed in any of these plans or other things?
Okay, I'm jumping ahead. Got it.
Yeah, I love the opportunity to segue, but I think we have a few more questions. But Councilwoman Michelle, did you have a question?
I was just gonna add that there is the, there isn't anything there from the human services plan, and I have a couple of items I think would fit into, we had a human services category would fit in there.
Wonderful.
And I, I was gonna say, we don't have transit, and then it was like, oh yeah, we have transit. So just throwing those in addition to what Lindsay said.
I love that you're ready to skip ahead, so I'm gonna take that as my cue. There's only one more thing I just want to mention here is the community feedback, which is incorporated in many different ways. I talked about how community feedback is inherent to each one of these plans. Community feedback, we're gonna address our process for community feedback as we draft and create this CIP. But also I wanted to mention, there's other ways that people provide community feedback that we capture and use. There's the reported concern, when people have, you know, tripping hazards on our sidewalks or potholes or other things, we take that into account and that shapes what goes into the CIP, including our request to council for how much we think we need for our concrete management plan, et cetera. We also take community feedback, the task force recommendations, that's another component of this that we're trying to make sure that we include in the draft university. Next slide, please, Tish.
Would you also include the community survey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, that's another one. Great example. So additional priorities that may not be addressed in a specific plan that we've adopted at this point, and these are just a list of examples so that you know, you know, there's been some questions earlier, but how would this get into the CIP? Where did that even come from? I think that's generally what this slide is meant to address. So here's some examples. So sometimes we have to do an emergency response. It's not in a plan for a landslide to happen, but suddenly we need to double wall and we need to shore that up. Sometimes people crash into a signal cabinet, unfortunately, and that's a, that's a cost that we try to plan for and make sure that we have enough funds available to respond to that need. IPD fleet was a big item in the budget this year, and that was something that we don't have a fleet. IPD fleet was a big item in the budget this year, and that was something that we don't have a fleet plan yet. It's something that we haven't built a plan around, something that we're working on. But, but IPD fleet, I think is a good example for the budget and one of the topics we covered this year. Then we talk about capital maintenance. That's a little bit different from typical repairs and maintenance. Capital, capital maintenance are those bigger costs that we, that are much more expensive. And so there's some examples of that, that don't have a specific plan that's adopted in the same way as the, the master mobility plan or the ICAP or other plans. But that includes things like the PMP that we talked about, I mean, the pavement management plan, signals, poles, bridge studies, following up on those bridge studies and recommendations. That's not in a given plan, but we'll take that input and incorporate it into our CIP. IT and facilities, we talked about, we don't have a facility plan yet. We don't have an IT plan yet, outlining all of our software needs. Sometimes to, to, to meet the strategic plan goal, we need to have the software and the tools that allows us to do that thing. I'm thinking about asset management is a really good example of this. To improve our asset management practices, we need the right software tools to be able to do that. And that's not necessarily in an adopted plan, it's just things that, but it is the capital expense that would go in our capital improvement plan. And then other various equipments, I think there's radio replacements in there now. You know, things, our radios are exceptionally old. We don't have an equipment plan. There's equipment all across the city that just needs to be replaced every once in a while for it to function for us. So those are examples of other things that you might see in the CIP that don't have, you know, a specific adopted plan around them, some of, some of that we're working on. But equipment and things like that, we, we may never, just needs kind of come up to replace these things. Next slide, please, Tisha. So now this leads us to our next activity. You've heard enough from me at this point. I think the question for you, and I'm going to turn it back over to council leadership, is what are some of the priorities we should be sure to address with this CIP update? What are some of the things that you didn't see listed here that you feel like we haven't yet addressed?
Great. Steph gets to go right again.
And Deputy President Anscrib.
A little bit I know.
No, you absolutely have served that functionality for us.
This is my favorite part of meeting.
Absolutely. Okay, so we've heard, we don't need to repeat things that are already in the plan or things that we've mentioned that aren't quite in a plan, but are kind of that known area. So there's no need to restate that, hey, we need to work on Newport Way or, hey, the Black Nuggets wall needs maintenance. Those, those things are already captured in our documents. So what we're trying to do here is what's missing, what else is a need, what else can we come up with?
That's a question for we start. The plenty of documents that City, Deputy City Administrator Snyder showed us may not be, you know, the only documents that we need to have. But are you wanting to get at a project level now or are you at a topic level now?
Well, I think.
Because I worry that we could drift into projects, and I'm not sure if that's what we.
In some ways, so like, one of the examples that I used in the document was, Councilmember Michelle had previously mentioned that one thing we don't have in the community is a downtown public restroom, which would help serve our human services and homeless needs.
So that's a facility. And we have a facilities plan. And we have downtown bathrooms that are, right, not yet. But we have downtown bathrooms that are accessible in the evening. They're monitored.
Okay, well, the, yeah, we can, we can talk about the specifics of that, but.
So that's why I'm asking, are we talking, you know, that there are categories that are missing? Or are you looking at the documents that she gave and said, can we put, can we talk about projects under those categories?
I think I'm leaning more toward projects. So as an example, if I'm looking at the master mobility plan and I'm saying, whoa, I really feel like they were missing X, Y, and Z. That's important to capture in here. If there's maybe a concept or something, that's probably also important. But I think what Wally had asked for us was, hey, what else should we list in here as projects that staff can then evaluate and figure out what the resource constraints or requirements are?
Thanks.
Yep.
And I think specifically what was asked of council leadership to frame the discussion was, what community need is not being met, that is not in the existing plans, and what are we missing in the CIP? So I think we can be broad and kind of throw things out there.
Broad and specific.
Right.
Yeah. So I'm going to say, throw the idea up there on a downtown public restroom. Now, you may say that's in the facilities plan, but because we haven't seen.
No, no, I'm saying it's a facility. I don't know what's in the plan either. So it's, it's something under a broader plan, whether it's the facilities plan that is yet to be shown to council or is it a brand new? That, that was why I was asking the question, is that for me, that's a facility. And so it should be listed as something that might be missing from a future facilities plan. Or be considered in a future facility.
Yes. And it's perfectly fine, because at this point, we're, we don't have that knowledge. So, you know, I can assume that a future facilities plan would have a consolidated in City Hall on it. But I'm not going to sit here and assume that it would have downtown public restrooms on it, so.
So I'm putting it up there to consider it for a future facilities plan. That totally makes sense.
Yeah.
Bart.
So I think a little bit of clarification, I, I think we need public toilets more than the downtown. Up in the Highlands, in the business area, they also have problem with unintended, unwanted deposits, let's say. And the other thing is, and I'm going to look at Jeff here. You know, Wally had had this conversation and I've talked to Monica about it. And here's the thing that we come and forgets. If it's in a CIP, maybe it'll get done five years from now, 10 years from now. We need something now. This is a human, this is a human health services. So it's probably, I don't think it's necessarily something we want to put. Well, I don't want to take it out. I mean, I want it to be raised to the level of discussion and importance. But we've had people, I, I just had a conversation on the Thursday with church members who go out and do cleanup. And one of them said to me, well, what they can find the most of is human feces. We have a large problem here, and it needs to be addressed in more than a 10-year plan. So I'm going to look at Jeff. So that, that's been the conundrum. And then the other conundrum is, you know, for example, Seattle and many places have tried all different kinds of portable toilets and all kinds of things and failed for one reason or another. They, you need a person on staff to monitor, make sure it's safe and all of that. And so we really need some research and expert best practices, I think, from other municipalities. So I'm not sure if this fits in a long-range plan, whether it's an urgent need for something that needs to be. We need to start addressing this like right away. So Jeff, I think you want to add.
You're, you're touching on, yeah, the need in the city's provision of public restrooms throughout its town is, yeah, certainly worthy of a conversation. I think how we, the type of facility we look at and how we build it and where you build it and what it is is correct. There's a lot of cities that have done a lot of work. Mayor and I have been talking to King County Parks about piloting a Portland Loop. So look up, look up the Portland Loop as a, as a really intentional design that tries to do this very thing.
Which get, which will be a first with the King County Parks, if it might happen in Isiqua first. I think, I think you need to do both, Bart. I think putting it in a plan, whether it's a facilities plan or whatever, doesn't diminish the urgency of it. It will be your job as a council member to get three other members to move that up the list and pay for it.
Will I be the total council member?
So, so I think, I think it's both. And it will be, you know, up to you to get, drum up the energy to convince three more or more that that's the expenditure you want to make.
That's an urgent expenditure, okay.
But putting in a plan is good, Jeff.
I was going to say pretty much the same thing, yeah. There's, there's this potential long-term need in the plans. But if there is this sense of urgency, you know, perhaps there are other ways of exploring solutions that like public-private partnerships or, or, or bodies like you were just explaining. So like, there are probably more urgent solutions that aren't capital solutions, right?
I think we had Victoria, then Chris. I think there's a huge list of projects, especially if you include the backlog project. So I'm, I'm going to talk more of like a conceptual missing thing, which is some of the projects, and I'm looking at Valley Trail and Creek, and Creekside and some of the sand acquisitions. The justification and the project summary are relative to concrete-specific projects. They're very amorphous and kind of ambiguous. You know, we, we want to have a green necklace, and here's a fuzzy line, which is in the park's plan, and it's getting a little more concrete, but it's still a fuzzy line. And so it's more fuzzily defined. So I think for some of these projects, it's difficult. And this might also be with your downtown bathrooms, kind of where does it fit and how do you define it? And that becomes sort of a barrier to it progressing along the line. So I think for some of these, what's missing is the, like, parity of articulation of what we're actually talking about, so that then we could say, okay, yes, now we're evaluating it and yes, now this rises to the level of need and urgency that we want to fight it. So I think what's missing is sort of equal, equal level of.
Specificity?
Specificity, yeah.
Was that very good?
Yeah, okay. So it's almost like you're saying, one of the problems that we have with our existing plan is that we've got some things that, on it that are important and are capital, you know, projects. But the description is amorphous, so when we're trying to evaluate them and prioritize them against each other, that's very difficult. Yeah.
Interesting.
So that one's important, but then when you look at the description of it, it's, it's really difficult to know what exactly we would.
Yeah. So if you can put the example on there of like Creekside land acquisition is a good one in that it is a capital project. But it's almost like putting on there, build a new road, you know? Because it's not a like, and we need to acquire these five properties or complete this project. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Build a new one.
Let's not build a new road, but.
Yeah.
Sorry, interjecting just a little bit. And it's a wonderful example, and I love, you're right, that it should get clearer as it gets from a plan with CIP. Acquisition's an interesting example.
Yeah.
I would encourage us never to list specific parcels.
Yeah, yeah, agree.
That starts to get challenging, but it's, it's an excellent point.
Yeah, yeah.
But like with, through, just to interject again, through Title 18, we've now, you know, we've clarified some of the paths along which we believe there should be connections for the Green Necklace. So I think that level of articulation is not naming a parcel. But it is better than a fuzzy blue line that goes through the middle of the city. It's, you know, it's starting to facilitate these. Yeah. And, and some of them, some of the projects in CIP are very specific what it needs to do and what it is. And then some of them are more like acquired. Yeah.
Okay.
Chris?
I'm really struck in listening to the conversation about kind of process, about what's the process of building the plan? And I have a couple of thoughts that I'm going to just share. One is, I think that all of those component plans ought to be updated at least biannually to inform the CIP. Because otherwise, we live in a very dynamic world, and I think updating them every six years is probably not adequate. And it doesn't dovetail, if they're the inputs to the CIP, they need to be updated in the same cadence or more frequently than the CIP. So that's my first suggestion. It has nothing to do with what I want to put on the CIP. But then the other thing that I'm hearing is, there's a, there's a pipeline of work on the CIP, and things get pushed down this pipeline of, you know, concept to design to build. And we ought to be able to articulate what's in concept, what's in design, and what's in construction. So put that out there. And then the second thing is, I think the idea of public restrooms in various parts of the city is a really good idea. I'm not sure it's a capital project, though. I think it might, might be more of an operational thing. So it would be something we should deal with in the annual budget independent of the CIP. So we need to distinguish what's a capital project from what's not a capital or a capital expenditure. We need a pipeline that shows where things are in terms of their specificity and maturation. And we need to have plans that are actively being refreshed and revised and updated that inform where we're going and what we're doing. Because our world is too, too dynamic to say, we know where we're going to be in six years from now, because we don't have a clue. We have an idea, but it, it, it's not actionable.
Let me take what you've said, and I think obviously, building a physical structure such as a bathroom would be a capital plan, but one of the things, or capital project. But one of the things you pointed to is some of these ideas where there is connection between the operations needed to support that, that kind of isn't reflected in the CIP but is a necessary component of being able to support it. So maybe just.
Which you would see in your budget documents.
Yeah. Okay. Russell?
Oh, thank you. All right, let me preface this with a comment. I'm not advocating that we put speed bumps on all streets in the Old Town or Downtown area or the, the valley floor. However, as we look at pavement replacement, I know that just driving around at 5:00 that there are many people that are cutting through across Juniper, between Gilman and Newport, and they're cutting through neighborhoods to, to get around. And I'm probably guilty of doing it too, as I'm coming home. I used to live on Second Avenue Northwest, and there were a number of people that would speed by there at 25 or 30 miles an hour, and there was no way I was going to let my, my kid play on the front lawn. As we do pavement replacement, the, the question is, can we look at whether there are some traffic calming things that we can do just with the change in the pavement itself? And I'll just comment that, you know, when I go into a mall and my tire has changed from the road, the smooth road, to a bumpy road or at least a different sound that I'm hearing, it wakes me up that maybe I should be slowing down or looking at my speed a little bit differently as I go into these neighborhoods. So as part of the traffic of the pavement placement, can we at least look at ideas that might still adhere to state law, still let our firefighters and police get to places they need to quickly, but communicate to people that, hey, this is a neighborhood, maybe we need to slow down. And I'm just advocating this for the Old Town area, the valley floor, and areas that we're seeing cut through. So not Juniper necessarily, but the neighborhoods, Seventh Avenue Northwest, Second Avenue Northwest, alongside those roads, and just have a different pavement at the corner there or at the intersection so that people know, maybe I should slow down entering a neighborhood. Just something to throw out for capital in, in the future.
So I'll rip off of that, the idea even outside of neighborhoods, when we're doing pavement management, should we or are we considering restriping as ways to add bike lane, protected bike lanes or, you know, other curb cuts that give people the physical reasons to slow down or help out alternate methods of mobility? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody else, so I'm just going to go ahead. I just took in a 15-year-old kid who really very much appreciates the garage. And yes, that's a public facility for teens, but I feel like we need an actual teen community center. So I would put that down there. Yeah, I, I just feel like that's something that is currently not on our capital project because we're utilizing current facilities, but it, I think it needs to be a priority for us.
All right, so I, I won't go too far into this topic. Cool idea. I want to be really, really careful because our center's ability to be both semi-independent and also.
because our center's ability to be both semi-independent and also integrated into things is a rare and successful animal. And I just want to make sure, any potential changes, like we've managed to nurture a thing that a 15-year-old would think is actually cool, but yet also we have the oversight on and there have been other communities that have tried to do this that have gone too far in either direction and the value to kids plummets if it gets either to APB disconnected or to establishment, right? But a cool, super cool idea.
I completely agree with you. I just want to build them a bigger and better space. Victoria?
Um, well, I think, I think there's a discussion there. I think for a lot of these, there probably just needs to be a discussion first to specify because that's part of what's, yeah, missing. But I just also want to be mindful that through that discussion, there are certain things that the city doesn't have that would be great to have and that, that there may be a different way to achieve that than the city taking it on. I mean, we also have, for example, a creative arts district and we have volunteers who are very passionate about that and that's something the city is involved with, but the city doesn't need to be like the one who's running the show. So there are, there are things like that that are probably more of a partnership or maybe much more led by a community group, that it would work better that way. It's similar to what Councilwoman Ramona said, but I just wanted to make sure that that was reflected. City, the city itself, Canton should do everything.
Uh huh. Yep. So I'll throw another one out there. As I was looking through the ICAP, the Climate Action Plan, I noticed that the, some of their implementation strategies were things like generate and store renewable injury or energy. But if I'm thinking about what's the actual project on the CIP, that's things like, you know, community center solar or, you know, a wind generating facility in some park or something. How does that, you know, if, if we're just looking back at the plans and it says this more amorphous idea of generate and store renewable energy, how do we evaluate whether or not the project is here? Wally?
You know, I, I think that there's, you know, there's, there's still community dialogue on these plans. I mean, I think, and I'm sorry I missed some of the discussion, but we are not the be-all and end-all for all the plans. You know, I think as the Environment Board, for example, continues to talk about opportunities, I think we have to be mindful, you know, immediately comes to mind, what are we doing with city facilities to help the cause? So I, I think that, again, this conversation is really important for forum or the general discussions, but we can't be the be-all and the end-all. So I think we're gonna depend on the Environment Board to continue to have discussions over an extended period of time. We will dovetail things like, what are we doing with city facilities? Be it solar, be it weatherization, heat pumps as appropriate for our own facilities.
So if we're trying to come up with the list that we're gonna expect staff to be able to evaluate, I think it's really easy to pull all of the projects off of the MMP because they're all very specific, very detailed. How does that happen for some of these other plans? Like, a lot of the stuff in the ICAP is very specific. But how do we deal with something that maybe isn't? How is staff going to deal with that?
Well, again, I, I think we look, we have pieces of this. We, so staying on the ICAP, so there are things we can do with municipal facilities. We are talking about things we can do with electrification of vehicles, not only the purchase of those vehicles, but how they're, they're powered. If you have a whole fleet of electric vehicles, where do they get their electricity? And are there opportunities to work with other public agencies in the area to do that? So we're having those kind of discussions. The discussion here this morning helps inform those discussions. You know, if you're saying, we're not really interested in any of that, then, okay, well, then maybe as we talk about it, we're gonna be less interested. But, you know, one of the hallmarks of today is to marry the two. Is to marry, you're saying things are important, staff is saying things are important. We gotta marry them. So I don't know that we need a specific answer today, other than to say, hey, there are some of these things that are perhaps a little bit more amorphous. Time's coming to make them less amorphous.
Yeah.
So I, I wanted to return to a discussion that we kind of started earlier that goes along with what Wally just said, and that is the Transportation Benefit District. It isn't, you know, we're not gonna put it on the list of the CIP, but we're not gonna get where we want to go without starting to look at that. I did happen to look up IMC 12.70 last night, which is the, you know, the city council is the TBD governing body. So when do we trigger a first meeting of that group? When do we start taking action? When do we start planning to take action? All of those questions, I think you've gotta start addressing because we do not have the funding to do all of, we, you know, T Center, I love that idea. We don't have the money to do that. We don't have the money to do even the transportation things that we would like to do. So, uh, there, you know, reading the, um, the IMC, there's some very specific things that TBD can do and then other things it can't do. And so let's start digging in and figure out how we start to use that tool. And then the other thing we need to do is, again, look at the Capital Task Force. You know, what came out of that, that would inform what the TBD is going to do? What are the other things that are in that that would not be appropriate for the TBD and so forth? All those issues, I think we need to start thinking about how we start utilizing that tool.
Yeah. So we've got a funding conversation coming up a little bit later, so we will absolutely get into that.
Thank you. I just wanted to say for the record, implementation of the Master Mobility Plan and the ICAP are super important. I sort of figured that that was go without saying, but that needs to be reinforced, and I don't say that now. And yeah, some of those need to be more specified, like renewable energy, but those are super important. Those are also, unlike a lot of the plans that were on that list, I don't believe either of those needed by the state or something to be written up. That was community, the community wanted to have a climate action plan. Those are ours. Those are ours. So, you know, those, those are ours. That's because the community shared, which the volunteers spent a lot of hours of their life, which the staff spent a lot of time thinking about how to, how to action, how to get in action. Actually, yes, thank you. So those are super important ones and they're recent, they're modern. We just need to turn them into projects. So just wanted to say that, uh, those two are super important and they're ours. We should do them.
Great. Um, I will throw another one out there. If I'm looking around the city and I want people to take transit, I think that bus shelters are really important. And I don't know who builds those or whether we can.
I can't even get a garbage can from Metro, some of our bus stops.
Well, but okay, here's.
Oh, that is Metro's responsibility.
Yeah.
But could we do it? Because it's our right of way.
Um, so from a philosophical point of view, our residents pay taxes to several levels of government. Once we start to do another level of government's work via our local dollars, we are encouraging them to give us all of their work. So as much as I want bus shelters, I think, I think one thing we can do, Council President, is we may be putting something up here on a sidebar that says, this is the levers we have the most control over, but are there things that will get us capital improvements that other people have the levers over? And so I think we need more from Metro. And so we may say that some of our infrastructure needs are other levels of government's responsibilities and therefore part of our lobbying agenda is to go after county, state, and fed, get those ones.
So let's put that down as an idea of capital projects in our community that are.
By others.
Yeah. Other agencies.
Because other agencies give us money for our projects and then we can convince them to make their investments for their projects.
Yeah.
We need more garbage cans, shelters, and benches at our bus stops. And I can't even get us a garbage can at the bus stop across the street from the jail.
Yeah.
And all of that's gonna be described in the upcoming transit plan, right? Like what we need to do to beef up capacity and prepare for transit and then also.
Yeah. But again, I don't know what's in that plan, so I just gotta think through what's important to.
But Council President, you brought up a very good point. And that is that something we don't talk a lot about and we ought to because it rains here ten months a year. If you really want to impact, when people get around town, we have to take the weather into account.
Yeah.
And I hardly ever see anybody standing in the rain at the bus stops building shelters. They're hiding and building dorms and other things. And so some lens of, a big component of changing modes is providing more weather protection.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
Well, in the, in the area of things we want other people to do for us is housing, housing. And what kind of a role can the city play to facilitate more, I'm just gonna say more housing, more affordable housing, but more housing? Just a conversation with Air Herbage yesterday from the city of Kimball. They're doing three big projects. They've gotten three big projects off the ground. And, you know, how did they do that? And how did they leverage what they had to do that? All of those questions, I think, are really important. Doesn't mean that they are building housing, but they are.
They're using their ability to leverage partnerships.
Exactly.
Keep hearing good questions.
I know. Yeah. Russell?
Thank you. We put a million dollars to the Terminus for Sound Transit in our most recent iteration of our budget. I'm wondering if in the next three to five years, or maybe two to five years, it might be appropriate for us to think about a community summit to talk about what we want to see at that Terminus in terms of, you know, total pointed out, one over fives are being done in Woodinville. Is it appropriate for us to do that there? How many charging stations? How is renewable energy gonna play into that as well? It's gotta be a, a community discussion so that we can show, this is Issaquah's vision when Sound Transit says, we have some money for you. And they're not telling us what to do, but we're telling them what our vision is, what we'd like to do and how we have it set up and what funding sources we have available to bring to the table and have that discussion with Sound Transit when it is something that we've already discussed and we have in mind. So just throwing that out there as kind of a long-term capital improvement type discussion that I think needs to be on the table.
Can I add a bit to Councilmember? Thank you for bringing that up. I think it's very creative of the councils to start the conversation early and former Mayor Butler is very excited that we are learning lessons from where Bellevue did not start the conversation early and then where they did. Right? So that is great. But also in our visioning exercise as a city that already gets passed through traffic, we have to recognize we're gonna be the end of a Terminus. And, you know, Connie Marsh has come out multiple times and talked about having that conversation about what it means to be the end of the line because we need to plan for not just those that use it in Dissavil, but that entire travel shed from Evol to Maple Valley that will also want to access that line. So we have a big conversation.
And you've been part of that conversation with the mayors, as I recall, too.
Yeah, we have a, we have a King County Third District Mayor's Group that talks about the Sound Transit Terminus and a whole bunch of other issues. So I want to make sure we include those people in the conversation because they're gonna come to that station. So we have a, it's gonna be very exciting.
So that is, again, a capital project that will be built in our area that is not our money or our, yeah.
Yeah, and some of that visioning work started with the Central Issaquah Plan, too. There's a big segment on the light rail. That's a really interesting read. So one question might be, is that still relevant? Like, or what needs to change with that?
There's a final impact statement that Central Issaquah does not work without that station. Meaning the lab densities that are there right now under the environmental impact statement are based on the fact that there's mass transit. And if there isn't mass transit, or mass transit coming at a certain point in time, that's a difficult conversation we're gonna have to have.
Zach?
Oh, thanks, thanks. Sorry, I thought I was getting mine.
You're right, you're.
Oh, sure, yeah. I, I don't have a whole lot. So, um, strategic, so projects from strategic planning documents that are still in progress were kind of already brought up by Andrew, so I appreciate that. But ones that are top of mind for me are preparing for light rail, so that will definitely be part of our train and master planning work. Connected bike network, which will be part of our, you know, implementing the mobility management. And I bring that up because I was pretty disappointed the council voted against the electric scooter pilot chair program last year. And that was one of the reasons was that we didn't have a well enough supported connected network around the city to support electric scooters. And if that's the case, I think we need to start doing it. We need to invest in that. So that could potentially be an opportunity in the future again. Also, this will definitely be in Stormwater Master Plan, too, but just thinking about flooding events getting worse and happening more frequently, is the way that we're thinking about flooding and water management and stormwater management business as usual or being innovative and thinking forward about how we address future problems in that space? I also think our most underused resource, one of the best things about Issaquah is that Lake Smamish State Park is right here. And I don't always see a lot of connection between what our capital improvements around Lake Smamish State Park could help support Lake Smamish State Park. I know we're getting an informational update on some stuff going on with Lake Smamish State Park soon, but I just think that there are probably more opportunities to partner with. So like we, we talked about opportunities for groups like Creative Arts District. I think that Lake Smamish State Park is another excellent one. Uh, yeah.
Can I tie onto that, too? For those that are familiar with the Central Issaquah Plan and the urban core, it's a dream of mine that somehow in redevelopment of the commercial that's along with Lake Smamish Parkway and our current retail areas, that there's housing. How can you have a park like that and not have anybody to come on? So while we don't build the housing, while we don't redevelop those properties, we need to have a vision towards getting people to live right around the park. I mean, that's, that's crazy that people can't walk to that park.
Well, there's, there's a little bit of density throughout the road, but more.
And, and we have a transportation, a mobility project that connects us. But imagine if the redevelopment along I-90, where we have now two-story and what is storage units, two-story commercial turns into five-o-for-one and they walk across the street and they're in a park.
And the park that requires that partnership so that when Lake Smamish State Park is redeveloping their entrance and all of that, that it orients toward us, but then also we orient our infrastructure toward them.
There's a, there's a huge opportunity because, you know, as you go up East Lake Smamish Parkway, we do have residential, they can get on the trail, they can get to the park. But what about the south end? What about the west end? There is enormous opportunity to get people to live around that park, which I think would help with park development, park usage. It will really, it's just, it's, it could be amazing.
Yeah.
Just tell all the soccer moms and dads that they could walk their kids over the soccer field.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, as one of those kids that used to play soccer, they're growing up in the middle of time. This is one of the reasons why I brought it up. So thank you for kind of going into detail on that. Housing, yeah, that's a good point. I mean, so is economic development around here again. How are we encouraging that? So anyways, there's that. Also, I have no idea what the state of our community center is. You know, is it in disrepair, is it in need of improvements? I don't know if that's a capital need or not, so I just thought I'd throw that out there. And then the last thing was, I listened to this really interesting podcast last month about wildfire preparedness and disruption to utilities and infrastructure caused by wildfires. So just throwing it out there, like have we kind of thought through as a city at administrative and staff level, like what of our, what of our infrastructure assets are susceptible to damage from wildfire? Susceptible to threat of wildfire? And what are the solutions to that? Because if something bad were to happen, we don't want our community without power, without water, without other things that they need, right? So, yeah, anyways, just wanted to go that out there. And that's all I have for what's missing.
Can I actually, can I add? Just on that thought, you know, the county, I think, came back or at least was presented by you for that map that showed wildland, urban interface fire risk, right? And the question is, does that map drive any conversations about hardening, right? Because we've got, you know, there's more than, you know, you're in my opinion about well, the urban interface fires, but it's, you know, having been presented that data, what do we want to do with it from a capital standpoint?
There is some legislation currently winding its way through for that interface that might come to form at the end of the session, we'll have to see.
So dollars from the looking?
No, just, there's some legislation.
No dollars, absolutely no dollars. I can get the number to you guys if you'd like and send it out.
Well, that does bring up a good point, that. That, that math and that kind of idea of that was generated outside of our control. So it's not one of our plans. But there may be plans of our partners, such as EFER, or, you know, ways that we interface with WatchDOT or something that helps utilize both of our spending. You know, just basically something in there that references or recognizes other agencies' plans.
So similar one to that is Cascadia Rising results.
You're right. Yeah, emergency management, Cascadia Rising.
Can I answer that too? I think you guys are hitting on a topic that has just become very relevant over the last 10 years, which is, is our infrastructure resilient to these challenges? We have, we have chemical challenges with, that we have to be concerned about with aquifer protection and wellheads. We have forests, you know, that, the boundary hazards. And so I think there's been a much better lens put on that, but it's still continuing to fail. And again, a lot of it comes as regulations and plans from other, other people.
Yeah. Great. And then I have one other item on my list, which was just responding to the community survey. One thing I saw on there was street lighting. And so I think that's something that we need to have a conversation on. It's not appropriate for all neighborhoods, but it's obviously a community interest in some neighborhoods. But I'm not quite sure how that would be represented in a plan or whether we just need to pull that out of the community survey.
Yeah, I think, I think a conversation first. And again, I go back to the design of the older neighborhoods from the 1960s to the newer neighborhoods from the 2000s. Community expectations are different in those different neighborhoods. And how do you, how do you satisfy safety and security concerns with bright lighting concerns? So it'll be an interesting conversation.
Yeah. Yeah. So does anybody else have any other ideas coming up?
May I add one to the table?
Yeah.
These are great. One of the other lenses that I told Andrea I wasn't gonna mention today, but now I changed my mind, is I'm going to call it the impacts on livability by those that don't live in the community, but that transit through our community. So we expect to be a retail hub, we expect to be a transit center. But having I-90 come between us, dividing our city, also makes us a pass-through town. And I did a quick scan of the mass mobility plan. And something that I ran on five years ago was I want to put emphasis on local mobility, even if it's at the expense of pass-through traffic. And I say that in a way of those residents that live on South Front Street. We don't have a project or have had a discussion about what South Front Street, how it could be designed to better serve our residents based on the fact that we are a pass-through community. So I'll jump to a specific project, which may or may never happen. But if we were to install roundabouts all the way down out to the city limits, you would give equal access to our residents to get on and off at certain times of the day. So in just scanning everything we talk about, we seem to leave that elephant, you know, it's not in the room with us. We're not talking about it, but the community talks about it all the time. And so I think somehow we have to have a conversation of, are we really committed to making it easier for our residents by looking at some of these projects that we, we haven't even talked about the concepts of before? I think a lot about Sycamore and downward Barbless. You know, they get stuck for hours at a time.
So maybe local traffic prioritization.
I'm gonna call it pass-through. Let's call it pass-through because they're not stopping and shopping. They're adding 40% of the traffic to streets at times of the day.
I was, I was talking about the solution to that, which is create projects that prioritize local traffic.
Yes.
Over pass-through.
Potentially in areas that we haven't talked about. Yeah. Like I, you know, I used to be able to go to Miramont and pick kids up at four o'clock for soccer. Nobody would do that. And so Highway 18 is a ways away, and it's probably a part of the solution. But I think there's a local component to the solution. Might be, what's the name of her at the very south end of town? Lewis Lane? Lewis Lane neighborhood, Sycamore, all the way up through where Councilmember De Michele lives. There's opportunities there to help ease the burden.
That intersection with Second with the turnoff to the high school.
Absolutely.
Be a great place for a roundabout.
Once you get a roundabout, you can start to equalize the access into the stream of traffic. Well, what better than a light?
Yeah.
So anyway, that's just a big lens to throw out there. Zach?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to say that this is actually a topic the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee has talked about quite a bit as items come up. Most recently has some feedback for the intelligent transportation systems land that's coming up. So this is definitely living within our committees and our framework.
I think I timed it the other day. I was at the light at Second and Front Street. And there was nobody going north and south, and I couldn't turn left. And I'm like, this is crazy. So I, I think there's opportunities there that also when a former council member, Batista's neighbor, always used to talk to me about, he's passed away since, you know, just on Newport Way, when you come past Gibson Hall, there are two through lanes. And if it was a through lane and a lane that was exclusively a right-hand turn, neighbors on Wildwood Boulevard would be able to get out of local. And that's a prioritization of local over. So I just, I just want us to think about that because it is still the number one thing that people complain about is how we get inundated in the afternoon to such a significant degree. Sorry, Andrea, I wasn't gonna bring it up.
You did. So at this point, I think that's kind of the conversation about what's missing. We are way behind on time.
Oh, we are.
Yeah. So I'm gonna propose that we grab our lunch and then maybe do the next part while we eat. Are we good with that? Okay, so let's do.
Does everybody, we've told two.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so this next section, like we said, we're a little bit behind. So we're gonna eat while we listen and chat and all of that. But the next part, we're not doing a lot of brainstorming or kind of activities. What we're looking for is the administration kind of giving us some information to react to so that we can provide our questions, comments, concerns, and hopefully get to the point of buy-in on some of these things or understand what further information is needed for us to feel ready. Andrew, take it away.
Perfect. Thank you very much. So next, we're gonna talk about the CIP selection criteria. We referred to that a little bit earlier this morning. And as we look at doing this larger update to our CIP, there's, as I said before, a lot of things have changed since the last time we did this two years ago. We have, the Environmental Board was brand new last time we did this. Now they have, uh, we've adopted the ICAP, the Issaquah Plan Action Plan. We have a new Equity Board. That is brand new and an equity framework. And we wanted to be sure in this process to incorporate what we learned since last time from those two bodies. And one of the things we wanted to look at was our criteria that we use to, we talked about all of those plans that feed into the CIP and all that information that feeds into the CIP. Now, these selection criteria help us narrow it down in terms of our priorities, how to vet, what should we do in the next six years? And we looked at our criteria and it looked like some things were missing based off of, you know, having a new Equity Board and new information. So we wanted to update our criteria with this process. We looked at other cities in terms of what other cities have criteria, how they approached this. And after doing that type of research, we realized that the base criteria that we have are, are good starting point. We don't need to throw it all away and start over completely. But we do need to improve upon it and update it. And so that's really what we're gonna talk about today. And, and also talk about the process that we want to use to update our criteria and how we're gonna involve members of the public in that process. And that's what we're gonna be asking for feedback from you today. So we have proposed draft criteria today, and that is on the next slide. You can go there. So you see on this slide, there are our current criteria compared to our proposed criteria. That may be a little hard to see from, I see some squinting. So I'm gonna talk about it out loud. So we have current criteria on this side, life safety. And proposed criteria coming off of life safety. We wanted to expand upon that in terms of legal mandate. That's not something that we currently address. Some things we are legally mandated to do. We wanted to make sure that that's captured in our criteria, how we select these projects to get into the CIP. So legal mandate or addressing life and safety concerns. That would be our proposed criteria. So we're not asking you to necessarily wordsmith this today. There's a whole process I'm gonna go through before we kind of get to the discussion part of this section of the meeting. But just wanted to, to share with you what our proposed criteria are. Community priority kind of stays the same. So what is in adopted plans? What have we heard from the community that is, that is a priority? We also wanted to keep the criteria that specifically mentions our strategic planning goals that should be guiding what is in our CIP. Old criteria was environmental impact. And what we're suggesting is something a little bit more nuanced, refined, and setting a higher bar for what goes into our CIP. So that is really focusing on climate resiliency or environmental benefit. So not just what doesn't affect the climate or the environment in a negative way, but really looking for that environmental benefit in our projects and how those get incorporated into the CIP. Again, as we looked at some of our source documents, like once in the ICAP Center, we use that to help inform these proposed changes to our criteria. Identified funding source. That was an old criteria that's in the current CIP. What we're suggesting is expanding upon that in the new, in the new CIP, looking at identified resources. So not just funding, but what's within our organizational capacity, our staff capacity, looking at the global supply chains, taking that into account, how long, what can we realistically get done? And what are our resources that we can identify that are gonna help, help us get it done, right? So expanding upon that definition. Replacement or repair of existing infrastructure was part of our current or old criteria. What we're suggesting to use in the future is replacement or capital maintenance of existing infrastructure. And so it's not just necessarily repairing something that's broken, but maybe maintaining it better before it gets broken or dysfunctional. So we wanted to, again, expand on that definition a little bit, make it more realistic to how we would, to the projects that would go into the CIP. And then we're talking about additional new criteria that we have not had before, which is equity. We wanted to address equity. And that would be our new addition. So keep those in mind. We're gonna go back to these and discuss if you have comments or questions on any of them. Do you have any immediate questions right now?
I don't want.
Yes.
It seems like separate from community priority should be an explicit criteria of previous commitment. If, if, if we as a body have previously, and I think you're specifically around finishing the pedestrian corridor out to South Coast or whatever you call it. That's, there's a, there's an element to me of as elected officials that we should do the things that we say we're gonna do after we say we're gonna do them. And that should be its own criteria.
Okay, its own criteria, not as part of.
Community priority to me is different from previous commitment.
Okay. Okay.
It, it, it's just follow-through. It's closing the loop on the things that we say we're gonna do. To me, it's, in some ways, it's a council side of the same conversation we had two hours ago about how when we do projects, we should have milestones and we should see how we're doing against those milestones. When we make commitments as a body, those commitments should have a longevity to them. And one of the ways to have that longevity is to add the necessary criteria.
Okay, understood. Great, thank you. And we're gonna have more of a conversation about what, what we're missing here and get more of your feedback. That's just in a little bit. I wanna talk about the process that we're going to use to help refine these criteria as well. So before we get into your specific feedback on what we have so far, I also wanna talk about the process. But are there any immediate questions about any of these things before we move on to the process?
One, are we talking about, so one of the steps of this is creating criteria for creating this first set of projects and prioritizing them. But the other one is like, and we're gonna have to do an update in two years. So do the same criteria apply to that initial list as to future lists?
Yes. Oh, yes, good question. So we're gonna talk a little bit more about how we use these criteria next, our next one. So currently, this is just an example, all right? So this is not set in stone. We're gonna talk about process next. But currently, how we use our criteria is it's really a yes/no system. So environmental impact, does it have a positive environmental impact? Yes, no, great. Let's, let's put it into the CIP, right? So that's our current system. We've looked at it, again, we wanna set a higher bar. And we've also looked at other cities, and there's more of a grading system. We didn't wanna go to the point of scoring points because that gets a little technical. But what we wanted to do was further define, okay, community priority, what does that exactly mean? How do we make sure that we meet that criteria? And then also, can we give it a grade under a community priority? Green meaning that, sorry. Green meaning, for example, that it's identified as a near-term priority in more than one city planning document. So to get a green, we have a pretty high bar for it to, to really succeed in that criteria. Yellow is, you know, it's maybe identified as a midterm priority or it's in one city plan or something like that. And then red is that it's not really identified as part of an adopted planning document. We haven't really heard much about it in terms of community priority. This is just an example. It's not meant for us to really go over and wordsmith and all of that. Again, there's a process that we're gonna do to do that. I just wanted to show the difference that we're proposing with these criteria and how we use them from check the box, yes/no, to, okay, how well does it accomplish this criteria? And that's gonna be, that's what we're proposing, to use a criteria a little differently, set the bar a little higher for how we can vet these products and put them into this CIP. So questions of how we would use the criteria. Okay, next. So process. So what we wanted to do, given that we wanted to update this criteria and we wanted to involve our boards, some of our boards and commissions and those, those boards that touch on this stuff a little bit more than others, we wanted to take these draft criteria, after agreeing with you today, and work with four of our boards and commissions that deal more directly with these types of issues. So those boards and commissions would be our, obviously, our Park Board, our Transportation Advisory Board, being the two boards that really work and provide advice to the city on capital projects. But also the Equity Board and the Environmental Board. And to take these criteria to them and say, what, what do you think? Is this a good start? How can we refine this to make sure that these criteria reflect? For the Environmental Board, for example, does the environmental criteria we have, does that reflect the, the ICAP and the goals in the ICAP that you have? How, how does that reflect that? Same for, same for the Equity Board, to look at the Equity criteria as we've defined it and how do we refine this and make it better into the CIP? So that, so we wanna go to the boards and ask them to take a look at those criteria and help us refine them and get them to a really good point. Then we will use that criteria to draft the, the CIP. Staff provide their submissions based off of all those adopted plans that we talked about earlier and other inputs. And then create the draft CIP and take that back to those four boards and say, how did we do? Did we apply the criteria well? Do you think that this worked well? And get feedback on how well the CIP meets those criteria that the boards helped us refine and establish. And then, then, once we hear back from the boards, the boards will provide that feedback. We would then communicate that to the council committees. And that's when the council committees each get to review their section of the CIP. So as part of the council rules, the council committees, Mobility and Infrastructure, for example, would take a look at the transportation projects, water and sewer projects. The Safety Services and Parks Committee will look at facilities, fleet, IT equipment, and parks and trails. And the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee would look at service and stormwater projects. And so that's how we have it divided up so far in the council rules. And so we take, so each committee would be able to take that section of the CIP and take a look at those projects and provide comments and review. Then we would all get together at a committee of the whole to discuss the entire CIP. Then we would all get together at a committee of the whole to discuss the entire CIP as a whole. And council will be able to review it and discuss it as a whole and provide your feedback then. And then last step will be council adoption. So that's how we're talking about refining the criteria, how, what the board role is going to be in refining the criteria and helping shape the CIP. That means that we're not asking the board to pick certain projects. Most of these boards, like TAB, like Park Board, have already provided a lot of input in those projects when we made the master mobility plan or the park strategic plan. And so now we're asking them to help us refine the criteria to get into the CIP. Does that make sense when it comes to process and board role and council committee role? Any questions about those things? Yes, council.
So this again makes sense for this first process. What is the proposed process for a two-year update? Would it go back to the boards? Would it go back to the council committees?
I think we need to learn those lessons. So if we hear back from the boards at this stage, when we say, how did we do with the draft CIP and these criteria? Did that work? And we hear the board say, boy, we got it all wrong. Then I think we need to think about what is that next process? What are the lessons we can learn and we could have? So I think we're a little too early in the process to, to think about what's going to happen two years from now. We need to evaluate how well this process is going to work this year.
Might I ask for more?
Sure.
That was exactly spot on what I was thinking, but also, you know, with some other processes that we have, if we use the criteria and we end up with a plan that everybody likes, there's always a council opportunity in this kind of year to confirm that the criteria are working, right? And so it can be an iterative process, that's all I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
And then the other thing I would say that becomes a question for me is, it's great to have criteria, but with a ton of projects and limited resources. There's also something in there about balancing across, you know, geographic needs and across different types of projects. How is that a criteria that needs to be then added in that?
This is a great question. One of the things that city administrator Bob Wood said earlier today is, you know, this, today, we're looking at, okay, the administration's thought some about this and what it's going to look like. Council's providing your insights and your, your vision for what this should look like. We need to mesh them together. So this is, this is what we've thought about so far. A lot of the conversations that you had earlier about, you know, what's missing in the CIP or what are your goals for the CIP? We need to then take those and incorporate them into this process. And so, you know, I, geographic equity, I think that's, that's a great thing to talk about. That can be part of that equity criteria, right? So we need to think about what is the definition of equity? How do we meet that? What does that mean for ISAFOP and our, our goals and vision for the CIP? And so that should be part of our, can be part of our conversation today and the feedback that we get from you, but also certainly our boards, as we talk to them about what is, what does that mean? Geographic equity is just one example of how we can, how we can incorporate some of this feedback.
Yeah, and I think at the end of the process, you're going to have to take a step back and look at the whole thing. And you're going to have to say, okay, we've gone through a very thoughtful process to get here. Here's where we're at. Now what does it really look like? You know, equity is going to be a piece, obviously, funding is going to be a piece. There's going to be a number of things, which I don't know that you're going to be able to put in an exact measure to, but I think to have a conversation with those thoughts in mind toward the end will probably help your cause too. But we'll go back and if there's, if there's a better way or an intermediate step that makes sense, we'll, we'll, we'll come back with some ideas. But I, my guess is it's going to be, you're going to look at the, the big picture and have that big picture look informed by some of these issues.
Yeah, I, I think my only problem with looking back is that we tend to, you know, it's much easier to keep a ball rolling than it is to stop it at a certain point. And so if I'm looking at this and going, okay, the boards refine the criteria and then the board feedback on how the draft CIP meets the criteria, in between that is staff making some choices about what's in and what's out based on the criteria, but also based on the idea that, you know, we have a certain, like, our strategic plan or community survey says some things are more important than the others and.
That's why you all got elected.
Like where I'm looking at that, that's between step one and step two. And in some ways, we're proposing not doing that kind of overview, look at the balancing until, yep, step four.
Well, but that, but, but, but you need a whole to do that. So I think we're, we're coming to the table saying, we get that equity on many levels is really important to us. And we're, we'll do our best to incorporate that. We want additional feedback, review from the boards and commissions. You know, we have to add a different way to measure equity after we have those discussions. We can do that. But really, you're going to have a whole bunch of projects. Staff's going to come back and say, we only have so much capacity. We're going to come back, Robert's going to come back and say, you only have so much money. And then you're just going to have to make decisions. Our job hopefully is your staff administration is to have as much data before you as possible, give you our best recommendations, but then you're going to have to decide if something's not right on whatever measure, that could be funding, staff resources, what we'll deal with at that point.
I would also offer that we will have this goals and outcomes chart, right? So that's something that we're going to develop at the next, I think, committee of the whole is when we, we have that scheduled. So when we, when the administration drafts the CIP and starts making that document public and having public discussions about it, we will have looked through that goals and outcomes chart. And do we think this draft CIP meets that goals and outcomes chart? We're going to get feedback. There might be some, some discussions at the council committee level. On that, I really anticipate the opportunity to do that here at the COW as well. Once it's gone through a little bit of the process, we've had a little bit of time to refine it. And then we'll take out that goals and outcomes chart. And as Deputy Council President Hall said in his opening remarks, take that, step back and look at it as a whole. Say, okay, we've gone through this process, does it, does it make sense? Is this really, does this really meet the vision? Does this really meet the original goals that we, we set up, right? So I think, I think we have process to do that. Council remarks.
Yeah, I just want to say, this question about weighted prioritization is that every engineer struggles with this because, for instance, if you're doing a trade study and you're saying, do I make this thing out of steel or aluminum or composite? You know, you can wait to various variables, see whatever answer you want, right? So if you, if you just know in your heart of hearts that it should be composite, you play with the weighting of the variables and voila, the, the, the trade study shows composites. And it, it's a while, his point, it's going to come down in the end to us, right? You're going to provide us lots of data, we're going to comb over the data. People who think equity should be more important than anything except safety will, in their mind, weigh it that way. And people who think budget is more important than anything except safety will weigh it that way and so on and so forth. But in the end, the seven of us will then figure it out. But I'm really excited about the data. Really excited that it's going to go to committees, that it's going to get broken out into the committees. That is going to be so much work. And as a committee chair, I'm telling you, I'm excited about that.
Great. Thank you for that. Okay, so that.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes.
So when this goes to boards and commissions, my question would be, the, the funding? There are things that have funding. I don't think that necessarily means we need, if, hypothetically, I'm not saying there is a good example of this, but if it didn't meet any of the criteria except it had funding, we probably shouldn't do it because it probably sets us on a path to needing more funding than, than we would have, et cetera. So the funding one, because of that and also because if you prioritized it, like if you were a board and you prioritized solar panels on the roof of city hall and then because it met all these criteria, but it didn't have funding, then we as council could come to a decision about it and put funding. So the funding one concerns me because it feels like there's a piece of that that would change during the process because it's, there's a piece of it that's contingent on the rest of the process, at least in the way I would hope the process would work. If we prioritize something that doesn't have funding, then we would look at other revenue sources and find funding source. So having that as a criteria kind of, I think it's more of a context piece. Like it's context that we're leaving so many on the table, for example, but, you know, does that set up stuff for other things? And does the project otherwise meet the criteria? So I've never particularly, that as a criteria has never resonated with me. And I wonder how boards are going to think about it because they might see that as, oh, well, we don't have funding, so.
It's a contextual. And, and I think, you know, that's one of the other, so the criteria is resources. So it's, it's staffing capacity too, and then it's, which comes from funding. But then it's, how does it sit within all the other criteria? Some things rated, you know, there's, I think, six or seven criteria that we're suggesting. If something's rated really high on all these other criteria, then that really shows, maybe we really need to focus on how to get the funding for this.
I mean, that's, it's the classic pinch point problem. I mean, and I wasn't here for most of it, most of it, so I'll at least say how I perceive it. The council kept saying, this is important, this is important, this is important. And the staff dismissed it saying, yeah, okay, fine, we have no way to pay for it. So we'll, we'll work on it when we find a way to pay for it. So there's that missing piece of this, which is so central to, I think, everything we're talking about today, is yes, think big, have all these wonderful visions for the community. You know, money informs that. It's like the mayor said, it's a contextual piece of it, but it's not a completely in or completely out piece of it. And that's really important. And we will, you know, for those board and commission members who have lived through other iterations of this, we will be very clear in saying that. So they understand that it's contextual. Really well. Because if there are really important things that meet all these other criteria, but there is no money, then it's our job to figure it out, not simply to throw up our hands and say, sorry, move on to something that you can pay for. It's a really big step.
Yes.
A really big step.
My ask would be then that it is treated differently in that list of criteria. Right now, it's, you know, equal in that list with community priority, which it's, it's not. It's something in the major community priority, but we don't currently have a funding source identified. Then like you said, we need to figure it out.
So our job is to try to be holistic too. So this is, we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves, but we're not proposing that this is numerically graded, any of the criteria. We're going, you're going to hear in a few minutes, right, you have to talk about it.
I did.
Okay, did you already talk about it? Okay, coffee was important, right? You know, so we're going to, we're going to eyeball it too. Again, I think we, you know, if the council wants to stake it out or put it aside, that's fine. But I, again, my recommendation as your city mistry would be, let's let it ride. Because there's the human piece, there's the intellectual piece of this. It's not just all, you know, strictly depending on, it's, there's, you know, we need to step back in the staff. Hopefully, we're, we have those skills too and that we can do the same.
And, yes. Okay, so next slide please. This, this gets us to the discussion, so we're already in the middle of it. But the first question is council comfortable with the, I'm sorry for the error in wording on this, but the proposed criteria changes is what I had meant to say here. So is council comfortable with the proposed criteria that we have? And then the second question would be, is council have feedback on the process to revise that criteria and refine that criteria? Council remarks.
Thirty seconds of box. Honor is defined, one definition, as one's word given as a guarantee of performance. And so at my day job, I've been trying to instantiate a concept called honorable engineering, where you make commitments and then you execute to those commitments. I think executing to our commitments as an elected body is also super important. It's why I brought up this, a potential criteria of, you know, kind of existing commitment. I think what we say is important and I don't think we should re-zero the board every year. So I, I would really like to see a criteria that takes into account explicitly things that we have said that we're going to do. End of soapbox.
Yes.
So I'm kind of wrestling a little bit with the resource question because I think it's different. And I believe the contextual stuff, but the resources are big in scope and not specifically immutably and permanently tied to an initiative. So I might have resources today because we, we, we did that. But those resources don't have to be tied to that, to that project. You know, unless maybe they're coming from an external source or something. But when we start looking at, in the broader context of resources, and I love where you went Andrea with, you know, it's supply chain, it's city staff, it's all of those things. Those are very fungible across initiatives. And so to Victoria's point, it's like, you know, just because I had funding yesterday because of some, some model, doesn't mean I should have funding tomorrow. I think, I, I think it's an important, it's an essential criteria, but I think it sits on a different dimension. So that, I mean, that's, that's the only feedback I really have on the proposed changes. I generally like them, but I think that one is, that's a different critter. That's a, that's a, that's a horizontal where these others are vertical to them.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
No.
So are you specifically referring to funding or the other components when it comes to resource constraints?
All of the, all of the resource constraints, I think, are, are fungible and, and can be moved around. So let's say it's, you know, the constraint was, was engineering, because that's, that's a constraint right now, right? Well, I may have an engineer that I've assigned to this project, but that's not an important project anymore. That, that resource is fungible, I can move it. So saying, well, we already got an engineer, so this one's a higher priority, I don't think that fits. But I think it's, it's, it's essential to look at it, but it's not necessarily the same project.
And again, I look at it completely mirror opposite, I guess. That, you know, it's, you know, we have to be informed by the budget issue, but that's why you have a capital budget process different from a capital planning process. And I think that fungibility piece comes in the capital budgeting process more than the capital planning process. They're, 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 they're related, obviously. But then that's the administration's responsibility through the budget and through assignments. Because part of this too is, Emily, how many engineers do you have?
I have about seven.
Seven, okay. So you budget, I and I, and then a budget, seven engineers. Those engineers, at least currently, are not tied to anything other than they're seven engineers. And so every year through the budget process, we evaluate if seven engineers enough. Emily gets the budget on January 1. She decides, okay, how am I going to assign those engineers? So that's informed by the capital plan, that's informed by the capital budget. It's informed by her best estimate of who those seven engineers are and what they can do.
Yeah, I don't think.
So, so I think.
I don't think we're seeing it flipped. I think we're seeing it the same. I mean, I think it's, you know, and you can move those around, but just because maybe we had thought that we were doing this one or we had assigned resources, doesn't mean if the priorities shake out differently, that we continue to do it by factoring in resources as a, as an evaluation criteria.
But, you know, I, again, I think there, there are multiple kinds of resources. Some of those are planned resources, some of those are budgeted resources, and some of those are the managed resources. And so I think all three of those components are different. But at the end of the day, if you, there are parts of a project that have purchase, have, you know, outside contracting, all of those things are pieces of that too. So again, capital planning versus capital budgeting versus, you know, execution, I mean, we have to be careful not to swish too much of them around. There, there are silos. I hate to use the word silos, but there kind of are silos to it. So.
Can I say, I've heard this a few times from people and I think there's maybe a confusion about how identified and, you know, resources fit into this. So can we maybe put a pin in that and say, that's something that maybe we need to come back to and have a conversation on? Whether that is part of the board criteria or just staff, how it figures in? Okay.
Thanks. I would just ask the administration to make sure that equity doesn't get lost in equation. I mean, it seems that we're going to be stripping out things for the equity board to consider. And yet the committee or the, the board commission that has the project itself is going to be looking at it as well. And they may put an equity lens to it also. And so if those two conflict or those two get, somehow get lost in the, in the shuffle that's being discussed, then we lose kind of that, that focus. And also if, if equity doesn't have the funding behind it, but the community really wants to see it based on just like the current socioeconomic and the, the currents that are going on in the world, the weighting, I think, is, is important, that Tolu March points out too. So my concern is that equity is not just attached to one project all the way through and only one committee. You've got two people looking at it or the equity committee looking at it. And another lens from the committee that's looking at the project itself. So just don't want us to lose that. And I think it's important to. So just don't want us to lose that, and I think it's important to, to make sure that it, it continues to be tracked.
Bellevue CIP has some really interesting criteria in the financial factors. They mention revenue generating process, projects, cost versus benefit, sunk costs, avoided costs, and stewardship. And I think all of those are really important in evaluating which projects. It's not just about what resources do we put into it, but also can we generate revenue? Are we avoiding costs? You know, all of those things that make us effective users of our money. So I would advocate for that as part of the criteria. Okay, I'm, I'm looking at my note taker here and seeing if you got all of those. Great. Bellevue CIP. Okay, great, thank you. Second.
My mind was just kind of going a little, because you said sunk costs, which reminded me a lot of what Tola was just talking about with regard to, you know, staying committed to what we've committed to fund. If we've already put resources into something to follow through for the community. So I wonder if that's actually part of that identified resources element too. I, I could see how commitment to community or commitment to what we've said we're going to do fits into a lot of these. So I'm not necessarily sure if it needs to be standout or not, but I definitely think that's a point well taken that needs to live in this. One question, and well, actually, first I want to say ditto about equity, and which makes it so important for us to define what that means to the extent that's possible. I don't know how the equity board is going to grapple with that. But I look forward to letting them do that work, seeing how other communities across the country have done that and how they've incorporated that into the infrastructure planning would be interesting. One question, so our current CIP, there's kind of a narrative paragraph right before the current criteria that talks about how previously, in previous iterations of the CIP, projects would be ranked, and it was very subjective, and so that's kind of why we moved away from this. Do you have any concern that, that it's still kind of subjective? And how do we get towards more objective criteria?
I think there's always going to be human judgment in this process, and I think that's the reality. And that's why we have, I mean, if you take a look at this process, there's a lot of involvement of boards, and a lot of people get to weigh in and, and apply their human judgment and, you know. So hopefully that results in a really good outcome. But I think also what we want to do is set up the structure, in this case, the, the criteria and what defines red, yellow, green, to try to take some of that subjectiveness out. So, and not just saying, yes, it means, no, it doesn't. It's, I think, the middle ground between yes or no. And we're going to give it a 7.5 on equity because of this reason, and this other thing we're going to score a 3.25, you know, out of 10. So we're trying to find the middle ground that gives a good framework that can be consistently applied, but still recognizing that there is human judgment in all of this.
Okay, I buy that, and I think the red, yellow, green is a good model. The other thing too, when, when I think about these criteria is, you know, earlier I talked about how we have this kind of lack of a compelling vision or message that our CIP sends in terms of what the future of infrastructure is in Issaquah and what it means for our community. The criteria actually help tell that story a little bit about what's important to us and what the future is going to look like. So I would ask that the boards and commissions that we are talking to have some time to, to borrow a word from, from Chris Opine on that, on this criteria with regard to vision. Is this the right vision that we're setting for infrastructure and capital investments in the community? I think we would get some valuable feedback on that.
I like that idea of envisioning, do these criteria get us where we want to be? Not just are these the right criteria?
Right.
Two things I really, really like. One is, I particularly like the idea, if we said we were going to do it, then we need to weight it more heavily and do it. The only slippery slope I worry about is we also need the ability to kill something that needs to die. So, so that's the counterstep, but I think that all too often we keep saying we're going to do something, do something, we never do it. So yes. Second thing, I love, love, love the idea of having very specific descriptors of what makes a green in this particular criteria and what makes a yellow, so that it drives some of that subjectivity out of it. It's like, that feels like a green to me. And it's like, here are the, here are the, here are the attributes of a green, here are the attributes of a yellow. I just think that that is, that makes for a really cleaner model. It's a little more work up front, obviously, but I think we will, we will appreciate that greatly over time, so.
And would you say that's, those criteria things, examples might be different if it was a parks project versus a transportation project versus?
I don't know. I mean, ultimately, I would like it not to be. I'd like those attributes to be sufficiently broad in scope so that if it was a parks or road or whatever, they would fit. But that being said, there may be some where it, it break out. So, you know, maybe, you know, some of them break out differently and some of them are the same, so.
Yeah, we serve as universal.
The key is to define the attributes of, of a, of a rating.
I love that.
Yeah.
Great.
So.
Also, we're about 45 minutes behind, so how are we doing on this? So this is good, so if, unless there's any other comments or questions, I think we're ready to move on. Great, there we go.
I'll do a plus one on the community commitment one, so that would be on there. And then I think you bet the majority.
So what would constitute community commitment? Was it a previous CIP? Or how many times the council complains that, why haven't you done it?
Yes.
Because if it's, because my, my fear is that if it's anything that's in a previous CIP, you're losing it.
Yeah.
So maybe you have to, the council has to have special powers to designate something because otherwise you may, it would be really hard, other than, yeah, you complain about a lot.
But, but I think it, like any other of these criteria, it ought to have attributes. So if it's, if it can be green, yellow, red too, in terms of previous commitment. If it was these three things, then it's a green. If it's these two, it's a red. If it's, you know, something else, it's a yellow. So I think that it can, it can have the same, it can use the same model and we can.
But one of those things may be council has complained about it over five budgets and, you know.
I, I think part of that is that the community priorities. One of the things we've heard about certain projects like Sidewalks on Squawk is that it's been something that's been on people's minds for so long, but they sort of don't maybe bring that to council anymore because it isn't moving forward. And so it's kind of like that. So there's been a drop off versus a new, a drop off of engagement versus a new project that's on everybody's minds. And so I think having that history is an important piece because, you know, I mean, and I, I brought that up like before about having the history also in the document. I think it's an important piece of the context. I don't know how to make it a criteria, but I do think it's an important piece.
One possible solution, you know, in the same way that we treat spending bills different than other bills in terms of getting a quorum from council, you could treat votes on spending different than other votes, right? When we've actually pwned money up for something, that seems to be a different kind of commitment rather than a qualitative commitment. But just an idea.
So is that the end of the criteria and role of the boards and commissions? It, I believe so. I think what I also heard was general buy-in on the process that we would use to refine these criteria and the board and commission roles. So I'm getting some nods, so that's great. We can move on, and I actually think we're doing okay on time if we're ready to just dive into the next thing. We don't have a ton of slides in any of these sections, so. The problem is needing the technology to work for us. And that is the, she's, she's here. We're, I'm confirming, if we don't mind pausing for a minute, I'm just confirming that our audio is still working. It's very so nice on the screen. Let me just try turning it on and off. I'm just seeing.
This is so fun.
I think Tisha should get an honorary PhD in information technology, I noticed. I think it might be a good thing we're okay. Is it pleasant? Okay, okay, I have confirmation that we are being heard. Our audio is going, so, right. Our PowerPoint might, I'll, I'll work on it. You know, if we want, if we want the PowerPoint back, we might need to take a break so I can re-join the meeting again. Okay. Please, five minutes. Cookie break time, I'm down.
If we'll get some more coffee.
Yeah. Okay, folks. We have technology. Yay!
Now we're 35 minutes. Well, but let's, all kidding aside, let's, okay, so we've got an hour, an hour and 25 minutes left.
Yes, and we need to cover the funding and revenue options and then the work plan and council agenda.
So is your, is your sense that that's less than 45 minutes, the work plan stuff?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So how much time would you like to have to the end to do that? 15, 20 minutes?
Twenty, 25 minutes?
So yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
Okay, so by, by 1:35, we should shoot to be done.
Yes. Can I add something? Yeah. Do we have any public participants today? Okay, 1:45 is our public comment. Okay, yeah. Move it if you'd like a little bit. Yep. Okay. Got it. 58 minutes. Okay. Great. We don't have that many slides, so. Wonderful. So this portion, we really wanted to talk about, so we talked about the CIP update process. We talked about, you know, different goals for the CIP. We talked about boards and commission roles. We talked about the overall process for updating the CIP. Now, we want to talk about some of the things that will go into the CIP. So this is really about the administration's proposal to fund different capital priorities. The next slide shows an overview of the task force recommendations. And so one of the things we had mentioned earlier was wanting to make sure that we didn't forget this work, that we incorporated this work to build off of this work that was done last year and the year prior. And so overview of the task force recommendations. You'll see short term, which was zero to three years from last year. They wanted us to use ending fund balance and ARPA money, American Recovery Plan Act money in the short term of a mix of projects across categories as directed by city council. That was the first recommendation of what to do in the short term. And that we have, we are applying towards, right? We picked those projects in the community investment strategy. We're working on those projects. We got some extra resources in terms of staff to be able to accomplish those projects. So that we are actively working on and implementing. The second, medium term, four to six years, is to examine new revenue sources. So that would, under the task force recommendations, that was a levy that lift or transportation benefit district sales tax, that was their recommendation, to examine those new revenue sources, which would need to go to the voters, and to fund the transportation primarily, but possibly other needs. They did say transportation and mobility is our number one priority. We should think about how to move the needle on that first. They also said parks and trails and facilities were also really important. We didn't want to rank them. And so long term, six to nine years, they wanted the city to examine a parks district, which would again be a new voter-approved revenue source to provide for parks and trails. And so that was an overview, their recommendation. They had task force also felt ill-qualified to provide recommendations on facilities. That was something they really felt like the administration should weigh in on in terms of what are the needs? How important and urgent are those needs? Council remarks?
In your summary, I think the only thing you're missing is in the medium term, you characterize those as voter-approved. I think we, there was also a conversation about councilmatic funding authority, which is not voter-approved. I just want to mention that.
Thank you, thank you, that's true. And since that conversation, some changes of the state legislature have changed what can be done councilmatically to and increase those powers.
But we have a staggering, I mean, it's not necessarily a good idea to use. We have a staggering amount of councilmatic funding authority at this moment. When I started out on council, we didn't, essentially none. But because we haven't used it at all in 12 years, we have an immense amount. It would torpedo our finances to use all of it, but to use some of it is a strategic conversation.
Thank you. So that's an overview. Any other questions about task force recommendations? Great, let's go on to the next slide then, please. And this is where I bring up Robert, Chief Financial Officer, to talk about the general fund. And this goes into our ability to pay for some of the councilmatic bonds as well. So Robert?
Thank you, Adrian. So with the general fund, as we discussed, I know with members of the task force, we did present some of this information last year. And we also presented this in the biennial budget. So correct, revenues are not enough to cover facilities, capital costs without a significant reduction in service, meaning we have everything in one pot right now. What's, you know, a strong point of the city is we have very little debt outstanding on the general obligation side. But at the same time, our general fund is covering a multitude of expenses, of course, with the base levy, the base taxes that we have with utility tax, sales tax, fees, of course, carried by the city. Revenues and expenditures right now, this is the same forecast that was presented last year during the budget process, but we did add it to go through 2029. We're still balanced through 2029, assuming a strong economy. That balance includes still the council targeted 15% of unrestricted fund balance. We're still there. But that's about, you get this, 2029 is about $10.6 million. And so I want you to think the what if, meaning unfortunately, sometimes we're in the blue and do business, what is the worst case that could happen to the city? It would be a recession, of course, there's been a lot of talk of it, but we're still not seeing that happening yet. We're still seeing, we look like we're ending the year. We have one month outstanding with our sales tax, for example, but we're ending the year right on target at this point. We're ending the year on target with almost all of our revenue sources. So we're still, you know, looking strong. That being said, if you did have a downturn, you wanted to see what the impact would be. An average recession over the past four or five different recessions, if you throw out COVID, that was an anomaly. It's about an 18-month impact. So 18 months of negative GDP, but of course, it's going to have multiple-year effect on the revenues and expenditures of the city because you're growing on a slower base. You're losing some of your base, you'll recover, but you're not seeing the increases you would year to year, like we're seeing about half to 3% in the out years year to year on the revenue and expense side. So what would that do? An impact of an 18-month recession, if we look at this outlook for 2029, would be almost the entire amount of the unrestricted fund balance. So again, if you look at the unrestricted fund balances, if you need a fund, it rains, it's the fund balance. So this is just status quo right now. Everything holds together, all of our revenue expenditure assumptions that we built into the biennial budget hold together through 2029. So if everything's constant at the city, this is the scenario of looking at if we had an 18-month recession.
And if you didn't alter your spending in any way in response to the recession, you just.
That's great, status quo with all the services that were restored and enhanced.
I'd like to just add one thing to, to your presentation, Robert, if I may, which is today, we're really about, this is our retreat, it's our moment to take that step back, as Deputy Council President Will said. We're not intending to get in the weeds with you today. So you're not going to see big complicated charts and graphics about our finances. We have time to, to discuss those things, but what we want to talk about is setting the pace for the rest of the year and the focus for the rest of the year. So our intention is to not dive into the super details. So I just wanted you to know what to expect as we move ahead in this conversation. So I appreciate the general fund revenue outlook and the, you know, possibility for a recession and what that could do for general fund balance. Their first full point there says, concerns that current revenues are not enough to cover facility, capital, cost. So then, is. So then, is, that seems to make an assumption that our facilities' capital costs would have to come from the general fund, and that we have some sense of what our facilities' capital costs would be. I'm not sure where they are.
And neither of those are accurate statements.
Yeah, okay, then can I just cross out that first statement and say, hey, there may be concerns about general fund revenue, but, yeah.
That's why the first word's concern.
We do have concerns. But we do have concerns, and, you know, yeah, we, our intent, we need to do a lot more to develop what, what our facility needs, what are those costs going to be, we need to have a lot of those conversations with you and with members of the public, because there's some decision points in there that drive the costs, right? So, um, unless, are there questions on this slide, because then we can move on and talk about that.
Just a couple of quick questions, Robert, thanks for the, the presentation and the information. Could you tell me whether or not an eighteen-month recession would be linear in terms of, if it were only a year long, it would be about, you know, seven million dollars, or is there front costs that, that we're, we need to think about?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right, it just depends on the impact of recession, so we're taking an average here. An average being about eighteen months for typical recession, but of course, that impact's going to be multiple years. So yes, that number would be reduced if the length is reduced, but then again, if the length is large, and larger than that, then it would go. So yes.
And the other critical piece of this is the eighteen months that the economists say is the recession, it's not our eighteen months.
Right.
That we have an echo.
Sure.
So if things start getting bad tomorrow, there, we won't see it in our revenues for months.
Okay.
And if things get better, we won't see it in our revenue for months. So there is, every recession that I have worked in, in municipal government, there's always an echo, it's usually three, four months before you start seeing the impacts, when the rest of the world's talking about it. There's usually three, four months after people say things are better, great, before you see it. And then given fiscal years, this could be three fiscal years, uh, depending on how the, it's the sequence before you can get out of.
Okay, that's great. And, Robert, you talked about the recession, um, uh, you know, impacting us. You also mentioned that you, throughout COVID, um, could you, in the future, just get us the number that we think we lost in, in the COVID year, just, just for our?
Yes.
Own information, so that we can just have that? Not said, we're going to have another COVID year, but it's just to know, uh, the magnitude of an impact.
You mean at the bottom of COVID, because again, it did rebound during the year two thousand twenty-nine.
Well, I think that, yeah, if you, maybe just a snapshot of during the COVID years, this is what we, we lost, just to inform us.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, man.
Oh, so doesn't this also assume, uh, so when COVID came along, we took pretty fast action to reduce, uh, staff and expenditures and so forth? So, this scenario is also assuming that we don't take those actions, right?
This is status quo, this is status quo. And just to sidewalk to this number again, because it's a refresher that sales taxes are number one revenue source. And so like, while, to Wally's point, there's always a lag between consumer behavior and the actual downturn, because it doesn't impact anybody until six months after. Right, there's also regional implications, you could have a regional recession, you think the Microsoft out there, you think the Amazon, where if something happens in huge, it might not happen nationwide, so we're just kind of factoring in what it, what an average, it could be regional, it could be national, but that's just the average.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
So, um, we talked about concerns, uh, with being able to fund our, um, infrastructure needs, was something that we talked about extensively with the task force. And, um, coming through today is our administration proposal of how to handle that. So, we would like to explore this year a public safety ballot measure, that again focuses on public safety. I outlined it at the beginning, or earlier today, um, when I talked about municipal court, um, the fire station, the new fire station we need to build, and also, uh, needs of IPD, this police department. There may be other needs, we need to have time to explore that, and that's what we're really proposing to do, is explore that with you, learn more about it, this year, and, uh, and examine, uh, the possibility for. We, we have concerns that we don't have the revenues that are required to pay for these type of infrastructure, and we think we will need to go up to the voters to pay for it. Second, and I, I will get to you when I'm done with this slide, thank you, Councilmember Marks, uh, second, uh, in the future, so we saw on the task force they had medium term and long term in their recommendations. So we're talking medium term in the future, it's still that transportation, uh, addressing transportation, and, uh, whether that's a TBD for the sales tax, vehicle license fees, there's other mechanisms that we can use. We need to define, um, have a better definition of what our transportation needs are, uh, and then what types of, um, of revenues do we need in order to meet those transportation needs? And then finally, again, as the task force recommended, uh, parks and trails, and, um, still proposing a parks district to fund those. But what we're talking about today is, first, looking at this public safety, um, as it relates to, um, especially the facilities that we know we need to build, and that's what we're proposing for you today, and for our focus to explore with you more, um, throughout the rest of the year. Councilor Marks?
So when you say twenty twenty-three public safety ballot measure, do you mean getting, uh, a ballot in front of the voters in twenty twenty-three? Or do you mean spending twenty twenty-three figuring out a public safety ballot measure?
I think we're working towards that in November, we may not need that, because there's a whole process we need to follow. You're very familiar with this process, and, and that they.
Which, which also includes figuring out when you would want to put one out, because of course, the muni election, uh, is different than federal and statewide.
Yes, yes, so there's a lot that we would need to do to prepare for a November ballot, I think we're very aware of that, but, um, that's something that we are considering, there's a lot of conversations we need to have before we get to that point. But we really, we think this is very important, we think that we have some urgent needs that we need to meet. And in the spirit of council trying to get things done, that's, that's something that we're trying to set ourselves up to do.
Great. Uh, Greg, can you come?
Yes.
I'm just, uh, asked that we examine our, uh, other cities close to us, Redmond, they had a public safety ballot out there, and it, it, I don't think it went through. And so, if we could just look to our neighbors to find out what they might have done wrong, et cetera, et cetera, and how we can improve on that. And also, I would urge that we be very specific about the projects with the, the deliverables that we're going to give our citizens if we do put a ballot measure out there, and we can report that we got those things done in year four, year five, or whatever it might be out there.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember, and, and the next slide talks about, a little bit more about what those public safety needs are, though any package, we would need a lot more work to define, of course, absolutely. But I assume you have a few more questions?
Oh, um, in that same line, I, as I understand it, the King County's going to be running a, um, crisis response centers, uh, ballot in, and they're aiming for April. So just, you know, I guess my big, my big question, setting aside specific other ballot measures, would be, what is the context of, of, um, uh, our taxing authority in relation to King County, in relation to the school district, in relation to other taxing authorities, you know, where do we fit, and how does that, how does that all work out?
Great, and we should note that as a, as a question, we need to answer for another, another reading, because that, that, there's some great graphics we have, and we can share that will make it all a little bit clearer than if you tried to answer that orally right now.
Yeah, no.
Can you make clear for folks who don't understand the context of that question, what that means? That the caps that are involved, and the fact that we're subordinate, or potential subordinate funding to some of those other? I, I'm not sure all seven of us understand the context of that question.
Yes, and it's been a while since I did the, uh, task force, uh, went on this, so, Robert, can you come up and just help provide a quick summary of our taxing authority in relation to others?
Yeah, so we're just under, you take, say you take one dollar of funding, we're at about nine cents of that one dollar you're paying taxes, just under that right now. So we do have plenty of authority as far as what the voter, we have capacity to go to the voters. Yes, there is some of the, the county authority, but we still have enough capacity regardless of what the county does at this point.
Okay.
Okay, I thought there was a net total dollar value.
There is. And we're, it's over two dollars right now, so we're all under that, we're about ninety cents.
Ninety, excuse me, ninety cents to the.
Okay. And we can go into a lot more detail about that at later times, make it a bit more clear, but, good, good question. Um, so, two things, one, I don't see councilmatic funds on here, and I think that is a super important funding opportunity that we have not taken up, that we should absolutely be considering, and I'd like to know the scope of what's possible there, so that we can best utilize that, I don't want to leave something on the table, especially before going to voters. I, I think there's a little difference between going to voters with a public safety ballot measure and one for a sales tax. But I think before we look at going to voters for a sales tax, we really need to evaluate our councilmatic. And then, um, the other piece in there, I know a lot of our capital budgeting comes from REIT, and so I'd like to get a better understanding of what our REIT forecasts are, considering what the, um, interest rates are right now, and what we see for that going forward, um, if we think there are any big projects that might not happen as a result of that, that would be useful for me, thanks.
I could answer that really fast. We're monitoring REIT, I mean, that's something we can answer right now, because we don't know the trends. What we're seeing, though, is that we did our forecast, but we're seeing fewer transactions than we did this time a year ago, that had a higher sales rate. So then the question is, what is this going to look like, and that's, that's, so we are monitoring this.
I'd also like to know, just, uh, you know, related to, some of our stuff comes in on big purchases, others regular, so getting a sense of what the trends are there. Yeah. And.
Andrew, how many slides are, I, I, there are a lot of questions coming out, I just want to actually get through, I wonder if we can like go through the whole presentation, unless it's really important, I'm piggybacking also.
I think it's really quick, but I know we talked about councilmatic bond and tons of bonding authority. But the question we haven't answered, that's the, the more difficult one, is what is our capacity for debt service?
Yes.
And so that, those got to go like chameleon and bing going together.
Yeah, great, yes. One is, what can you afford to do with the councilmatic authority, one is what would you do with new revenue if you were to do new revenue?
Exactly.
And how would we pay for those funds, right? Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, great, yep, all of those, you know, I know people are taking lots of notes, things that we need to address as we, um, continue to explore this topic. Okay, um, then, next slide, uh, let's talk about some of the public safety needs that we've identified so far. And so, um, we've talked about a new fire station in north Issaquah before at council, there's been presentations, it has been a while, but it is something that we have identified a need for a station, um, I say north Issaquah, north of ninety, looking, we've been looking along the East Lake Sand corridor. We, um, have not talked a lot recently about the needs in municipal court, and that's something that I would love to talk more about. Our court, as you know, was never designed, uh, to be a court building, it was an old fire station. And, um, we are getting, uh, many more cases, because we cover not just Issaquah, but north Bend, Snoe, et cetera, that's been a great partnership for us, we're getting a lot more cases, um, the security in that building isn't great, the conditions for, uh, defendants, the conditions for the prosecutor and the judge are all, um, we have safety concerns with that, and permission of justice concerns, and making sure that we're, we're doing our role there. So we can talk more in detail about that, but municipal court has some significant needs, um, and I, I look forward the opportunity to lay, uh, to discuss those more. And police, so we, um, originally, as many of you know, had city hall built, knowing that someday it would be a police station. And so, the police, um, have also been extremely creative in how they use their space, and they have really maximized their space. We've even had, um, some of them move upstairs recently onto the second floor where the rest of the city hall offices are. So, um, so we're, we're being extremely creative, but at some point, uh, we do need to expand, and I think we're probably past that point. And so, again, we need to have more of these conversations with you, and provide more information and data, but it is a need that we've identified, that we look forward to talking to you, um, more about as, uh, in the next couple of months. Councilwoman Michelle?
So just really quickly, so, it's a police that includes the fleet, that we've been fleet addition.
Fleet, fleet space, yes, but even just space and offices.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we have, I mentioned earlier, we have our human services team that works really hand in hand with the police, they're not able to be co-located, they're in another building.
Yeah.
So there's, there's things that, um, we're, we will discuss more in terms of what the needs are for police, but I'm privy to you, these are some of the things we've identified initially as some significant and urgent needs.
Facility needs, or more dramatically needs for police.
Yes.
Sure.
But this is the facility needs.
Oh, God, that's, I hope I'm not opening it for big chemicals, but.
Go ahead.
But, uh, so would, would enhancing the police capacity mean that we would also need to find an administrative facility?
Yes. Home for Wally? It's a, it's a great question, so what we've really, as we.
I really miss having my own bathroom.
What we, what we really, so, for those who are unaware, our city hall building in downtown Issaquah has, on the bottom floors, the police operations jail, et cetera. Then we have, uh, our permit center, which is occupying an old training room of the police department, so we've kicked them out of that space. And then, um, upstairs, we have some offices for, uh, police detectives and some police staff, but also finance, community planning and development. Most of the rest of the city hall that isn't parks or public works. Yeah. And so. Hoteling, that is, our two people who used to work in northwest. Yes, we're being very creative with our space and working from home and all of that, which has been a good experience for us to take those lessons learned in terms of what we need in the future. But really, what's driving these facility needs are public safety needs and state, public safety facility needs. Because the second floor of city hall, these other operations, finance, you know, mayor's office, community planning and development, clerks house, et cetera. We could probably, uh, live within that space for a while, moving forward, but the police have significant needs, municipal court has significant needs, they're the ones who can't wait. And so, we need to, we need to plan for them and provide for them, and that may need, may mean that, uh, the rest of us need to move out of that space, so that police can get the space they need, and the others can get the space they need. And so that's, that's a conversation that, um, we will absolutely have in the next couple of months. Study that's underway right now is to really understand, given our work from home environment, given the new application of, of technology and our practices that we've been doing to really maximize space and use it efficiently, still, what are those needs and what are our options? We also know, so we've talked about facilities quite a bit, but we also know that there's some operational needs in public safety, right? So we know, for example, this is just for example, at Eastside Fire and Rescue, we contribute eight point five million dollars annually, that's likely going to increase over time, and so that's something also that, that's a significant portion of our general fund budget that we're keeping an eye on and know, that there are some operational needs. And I mentioned, I mentioned Eastside Fire and Rescue as just an example of one of those things, because obviously that's a big ticket item.
And, you, I think we have to talk about police briefly.
Great.
And that is, that we recognize there are additional police operational needs. The department was decimated, we are nearly fully staffed once again, um, we, we, I think, looked at the behavioral health specialists and the work that they're doing, uh, I think we are, we, we do feel at this point we need to put additional resources there. We probably need to look at other policing issues, uh, traffic, um, community service officer, all those specialty things that we have largely not had the last few years, uh, need to come back in some way, shape, or form. Police vehicle costs, um, so there's more, there's more here, if we were to move down the road of a levy lift for public safety, we have the ability to fund operations as well as capital. And so, as we talk about this further with city council, it, we will look at both the operations side and the capital, but capital's really driving those, I mean, if, doing it sooner than later is a capital-driven issue versus really an operational-driven issue. But that doesn't mean operations aren't important, so, that's where we're at.
Thirty minutes. Okay. Um, next slide, please. So, uh, so we talked a little bit about our space planning project, we're on our way, um, with that right now, that's something that Administrative Services Director Autumn Monahan is leading for us. We're doing this needs assessment in terms of what do we need now, what do we need in the future. As I said before, the, the good thing here is that Issaquah has been exceptionally innovative when it comes to how we use space. We have, um, shared desks, shared workspaces, we've been very efficient about this since the last time we explored this topic, um, which was right before the pandemic, we had a conversation with council about space needs. So we're updating that, we're looking at what, what do we need, that's something that's coming before you at the Committee of the Whole in March, to discuss further, what have we found so far? Uh, there's in fact a community survey that went out, I think, uh, last night, this morning, um, so plug that, please respond to the community survey in terms of what you're looking for in future city, um, hall or other facilities. And then, um, so, we're going to be looking at, at that March Committee of the Whole meeting, um, what are our options moving forward for our facilities? what are our options moving forward for our facilities and really examining that? So looking at the data, what are our options? And then how, how do we, how do we solve this problem? So we have a couple of committee of the halls and other council meetings lined up to do that. Next slide please. Great. So one of the things that I wanted to address is that the community capital finance task force said that transportation is the number one priority. And we should be doing transportation first before anything. And I want to make sure to state that we are doing things on transportation. We are doing things on mobility. That near term suggestion from the task force that we will get ARCA funds, that we will get ending fund balance to fund additional transportation infrastructure, we're doing it. And we are likely going to come back and have more conversations with you about what the public works team needs to be able to, um, to move forward on some of those transportation priorities that we have. And that's a conversation coming up because I think we're still running into issues of our staff capacity, about how much we can really do and deliver projects for, for the community. So that's a conversation that's coming up. And the task force recommended that a transportation ballot measure for additional revenues would have to be bold and visionary and, and really impactful in the community. And our concern as we look at the projects that we have right now that are ready, they're not, they don't meet that criteria. They're not really bold and visionary. And we know that sound trans is coming, light rail station is coming. We're doing that I-90 crossing study with this light rail station planning study that's being done this year with ARCA funds. And so we know that we're probably going to have some financial obligations when it comes to supporting the light rail station and the I-90 crossing. And we think that's bold and visionary and it's just not ready to go to the voters for. And so we're not talking about doing a transportation ballot measure this year, probably not next year because we're concerned that we don't quite have the projects yet. The timing isn't exactly right to go to the voters for this. But we're still working on transportation. We're still doing new projects, more projects that we've done before on transportation, but not yet going to the voters for something big, bold and visionary because frankly, we don't think the timing's right. We're not ready. Um, I think, who was yours?
So the risk is stating the obvious, we can't wait 20 years to get the people, right?
Yep.
10th Avenue Overcross, do it, not wait 20 years. Figure out how we can do it such that we make it compatible, future report compatible with a light rail, something, right? You gotta figure out something. It can't just be, we don't have any things, we're not gonna do it.
So I appreciate the idea of waiting to do a transportation levy and, you know, bond measure or whatever until we have appropriate projects. The only thing that I would ask is that we look at our neighboring communities that have done this. For example, Bellevue did a neighborhood safety connectivity and congestion levy. And so I wonder if there is a way to create a set of projects around that that gives us an opportunity to move our neighborhoods forward and have the focus be in that area. So I would just ask that we consider that, not necessarily ahead of a public safety, but just as a way to frame that and kind of choose projects in a way that we've seen are successful with other cities.
I mean, the reality is, is that you're marking today on a capital planning process, but at the end of which you will have a whole bunch of projects and many of them will not be able to be funded. I think administration's view is let's get to that point and then we can look at packaging. So this is not a 20 year thing. This is a 12 month thing. Get through the processes and when we come together next year at this meeting, I think we'll be in much better shape. Does that mean we'll do it in 24 or 25? I don't know, but it's not 10 years. It's, you know, two years, three years. But it's, it's having that collection of projects. So if we wanted to have a neighbor, you know, whatever Bellevue wants or is, you know, Christmas tree where you've got something for every 15, 16 neighborhoods, that's something that's a pretty standard approach for cities to do that.
There's also the street levy preservation in Kirkland. So several of them have done something.
And hundreds of communities around America. I mean, it's, 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 it's an easy page out of the playbook to do. I mean, unless you have, you're going to build a new community center, you're going to build a new pool, you're going to build a regional park. I mean, that's how you do it. You have to package it up. The administration's saying today, everything we've talked about up till now is leading to that. But we first need to have projects that we understand that we have better, we've worked with the community on them. And that's the beauty of working with community is that by going to every board and commission, we're going to be gaining additional community support for these projects. So when we get to the end of the process, people will be really excited and say, okay, now how do we make this happen? We'll say, well, let's talk about how we can get it happening. But we've got to get, I mean, what we described today, six months. We've got to at least get through the six months before we do that. Where the public safety stuff, we believe, can travel somewhat on a separate path, if that makes sense.
I, I hear you. I'm excited to hear that conversation. I'm just worried because in, you know, the five or eight years that we've been talking about doing something to really move the needle on transportation, I feel like the only big ticket thing we've talked about is the 10th Avenue Overcrossing, right? So if there's other, if there's other game changers out there, I'm excited to hear what those might be.
Turn around. Turn around. Look at that group. That's a game changer. The five, six people you see there, that's a game changer. The game changer is a public works director who lives and breathes with data, who's looking at other communities, looking at the workload of our engineers and not simply saying, gee, Wally, be great about some of our engineers. She's saying, here's the workload of every engineer for every other community surrounding us. And here's the workload of our engineers. That, my understanding, hasn't happened before. Jeff Watling saying, we need a part planning team. Have you, did the guy accept the job yet?
Uh, he's gonna come and have a candidate visit.
Okay. So if we had done a national recruitment for part planners and we have on the hook a gentleman from another community outside the state of Washington, from a much larger city than Issaquah, who's excited to come here to make all of these things happen. So the difference is what you see behind you. That's what's different from perhaps sometimes.
So I was just gonna add to the Christmas tree. I was gonna also say that we have to have a Christmas tree approach. Everybody gets a present. It doesn't all have to be, be involved, the school district. It's like sod at Apollo Elementary Playfield, you know? I mean, just so people say, I'm gonna vote for this and I get this, you know? And then the big and bold is great, but it's, I think it's more important that everybody is invested and can see that they're going to get a value out of it. And the other concept we might want to think about is how does the, especially in transportation, how does this all network together? So that I did this in my neighborhood, but I'm also going to be able to get here using this, you know, this bond will give me both something for my neighborhood and a better mobility to get to somewhere else that I want to go. So maybe those are the things we want to think about is we're putting that package together.
Thank you.
We've got about 20 minutes left.
We're, we're good. So, um, so thank you for that feedback. And then really, this is for Titian's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So it's a way. So I just want to talk about next steps. So I really only have two slides left as we go through this timeline of how we leave all these conversations together. The, the criteria, the CIP updates, like public safety discussions, right? So we're looking at February, doing a board summit of those four boards that I mentioned to talk about the CIP update process and begin talking about those criteria.
And that's a joint meeting. So we're gonna put all these folks in likely a virtual room. I don't know that we're gonna find a real room. I, I don't know that we can find a real room. There aren't any real rooms available. But we're still working on this.
Not big enough.
Not big enough. And the barn's not available on the next. We haven't given up, but.
Okay.
But so we'll have everyone together. I just want to make that point that this is a larger event, not going to each individual one.
I know. That will pick off the process.
February 16th is the date we're looking at. Wow. Two days after February 14th.
So then we have also in February, committee of the whole, finalize that goals and outcomes that kicked off this morning. And then, uh, March, that's when we ask for the staff proposals for what are these projects? There's also going to be some touch points in some committees about some of these infrastructure plans that I mentioned before that are still in development. But in terms of CIP and the CIP process, staff proposals will be submitted in March. We'll use, uh, and then the boards will finalize those criteria. So we'll use those criteria to evaluate the staff proposals. And then, um, in April, we have a committee of the whole scheduled to talk about public safety and public safety facility needs and go over that information in more detail. And then also in April, the draft CIP starts going to the individual boards for discussion in terms of how did we apply those criteria? Did, did we meet those, meet the board's expectations or not? So that's just the first three months. I have the next three months to, to talk about, but questions on the first three months. I think Councilwoman Ryan's had it first.
Human Services Commission?
Human Services Commission is not part of what we're suggesting. We, we have, we have many boards and commissions in the city of Issaquah. Human Services generally focuses on grants and those resources. These four boards were the ones that we thought had the most touches on capital improvements versus programmatic improvements.
Thank you.
I'd like to get a sense of what the calendar is that you think we can get a public safety facility thing on a ballot? And I wonder whether waiting until April to have the committee of the whole is too late. I just don't know what, how many touch points and what the deadlines are. So I'd like to get that from you guys. Sure. Any, any ballot language would need to be adopted, I think, by the first meeting in August, first council meeting in August. The deadline to get to the November ballot is usually mid or end of August. And so, um, so we would need to have a, a package and a lot of outreach in the community done before August. And we think that this is still a pretty aggressive schedule, given where we are at this point in time and the studies and analysis that we're conducting. So I don't know that we could move it up a lot farther if we tried.
Yeah, it was more just, i- if that point is April, then can, can we move at a pace fast enough to hit whatever deadlines are for November? Or do we need to adjust our, you know, target goal at this point?
Yeah, I, I think it's a good question and one that we're frankly discussing internally as well in terms of what can we realistically do? And a lot of that's going to be shaped by the next two months and the conversations we have within the next couple of months.
I, I'd call it a proposal at this point in time. So we know we're not going to do this and not do it well. But let's talk about potentially doing it in November. And we're going to pick an opportunity where we know we can get this to be in line.
Is it possible at the February 6th to just kind of have a timeline of what those touch points and deadlines are?
There's a lot of internal work going on. And so I think what Andrea has given you is the best we know at this point in time. I'm not sure if we could commit to saying we bring stuff a month earlier without going back and having.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the deadlines, not necessarily what content.
That's the city, we're, this Titian back there.
Yeah.
She, she may know on top of her head. I mean, I think you're right. It's approximately August.
It is, yeah, it's, yeah, it would be the first meeting in August by, by that time. So at that first meeting or beforehand, council would need to adopt ballot language that would then go to the elections office for something on November. But, you know, I think there's a lot of work that we need to do before we get to that point. But it, but it is a date that we have in mind that we're trying to figure out, how could we, how could we meet that date?
And we think there's significant urgency to it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the thing is that, is this going to be perfect? I mean, Autumn would have had us working on this three years ago if, if, if she had her druthers. And she's absolutely right. But I think we're, again, as we've talked about balance all day today, there's going to be a balance of, okay, does this make sense? Here's how much time we have left. And here are the consequences if we don't do it. I think that's going to be the issues that the council's going to have to talk about over the next several months is those various factors. We know it's not. We know a perfect is, and this isn't perfect.
Okay. Next slide. Next slide please, Wally. Thank you. Yeah, great. So then we have, that was taken yesterday, April. So we have May through July and August here. So in May, boards would finish the discussion on the CIP, provide their feedback. And then the CIP would then start at the end of May going to the council committees, the various council committees to look at their sections, their assigned sections of the CIP. Then in June, the committees finish discussing their CIP recommendations. And we come together in that committee of the whole to look at the whole documents and refer back to the goals and outcomes, take that step back, how are we doing? And then we hope to be in a position to adopt the CIP by the end of June. The reason why we have the end of June is because you may recall that the state requires our TIP, our Transportation Improvement Plan, to be adopted by July 1st. And so if we can't hit that target, there's other ways to get around it. We can talk about that when we get there. But in terms of milestones and what we're trying to, to work for, we, we are hoping to have this whole CIP adopted by July 1st. And, um, and then we would be in a position to continue working towards a potential ballot measure in July and August. So that's really the, the first six months of the year. And we wanted to outline what our focus is going to be on as the administration. And that is all that I have for you. So are there any questions?
Do portable toilets qualify as a capital expenditure in a bond measure?
Well, I, you know, I think it probably depends on the type of, of toilets that we're talking about and how much it costs, right? Usually there's a threshold in terms of dollar amount of how much it costs. So I think we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to talk about that more of the process forward.
Okay. We're just putting it out there.
Understood. You are going to be interested in council.
Yeah. So from this, are you looking, I would guess, for buy-in on this process, this calendar and the administration not only going through the, the CIP rethink with the boards and commissions and committees and council the whole, but also pseudo sign-off on the idea of pursuing a public safety?
Yes, I think we're looking for, if there are wild objections by, by council to a focus on public safety, public safety facilities, then we would like to hear them now. If you tell us, you know, uh, that you have significant concerns and wild objections and you'd rather us focus on them, I think we, we want to hear that from you now.
I don't have an objection. I think public safety is a number one on public, on, on the public's mind right now. So I think just focusing on that is actually a very astute approach.
I think in the, so we don't have a ton of information about what's in there because we're early in the process. But I do think focusing also or including in the conversations behavioral health and public welfare, all the good work that the new human services people are doing, co-response. I think taking into account those pieces is super important for moving forward. So I think that should be there as the conversation moves forward. Great.
So, so capital dollars are not operational dollars. But I would hope that as this conversation goes forward and we talk about what it would mean for the police to have an expanded facility, that we would also be able to talk about the kinds of things that that would enable in terms of public, uh, uh, safety programs or capabilities, talking about capabilities. What would we do?
So the intent absolutely is to be on the operations side with police too. But don't talk about fire. Eight point two robbery, eight point four million dollars a year. Sorry, eight point, eight point five million dollars a year and we just write a check. And while we have tremendous representation on the EFER board, our colleagues from our sister cities who make up the EFER board are less looking at that bottom line. And so I hope that there's some way we can grab fire into this too. Because those costs continue to go up. And, you know, while we have, have to be pretty conservative in our increases, EFER is a single purpose agency and so they're less concerned about that. And likely rightfully so, but it then comes back on us. And so as EFER continues to grow its budget, it's going to start eating away at our flexibility. And if there's a way, somehow, some way to include fire costs in this, that'd be great. And if there's a way, somehow, some way to include fire costs in this, that'd be great. I, I don't think we figured it out in a good way yet. And quite honestly, messaging with this might just get too murky if we try to put too many things on it. You know, a fire station, which we know is needed, we were fairly down, far down the path of doing that, that's a here and now thing, uh, but the operational costs on fire, we have to at least talk about.
So if, if I can opine, having spent kind of the last five years with my EFER friends, I actually think that we should start to socialize the idea of converting EFER from a not-for-profit into an RFA, a Regional Fire Authority. Um, and then it becomes its own taxing entity, and it, it simplifies things. We can still set it up to have the same, same kind of representation structure. But I think until we do that, um, we're never really going to have an equitable, uh, approach to the cost of fire across all of the EFER partners. So, um, I, you know, I'm not, we're not ready to do it today, but it's something I think we should consider and start to socialize and start working because I think it simplifies the model for everybody, you know? And it, and it, and it equalizes the model for everybody.
It's way more equitable.
Yeah. So, so, well, these guys are going to make that happen.
The nicest feeling in the world is to do this, right, Chris? Um, I, and to, to that point, I'd like to ask Robert and his folks if, uh, if I can get a session to go over, uh, EFER financing, sort of a past and sort of the way I like to look at per capita spending and all that kind of stuff to get a sense of this, as I can get my arms around it and start talking to EFER meetings. Thanks.
Okay, so staff, you, sounds like you've got the buy-in and the go-ahead.
Yes, thank you. We, we, we've found a lot of, and Andrea, thank you, and the staff that, that's here. We've found a lot of time working on today because we felt it was important to get your buy-in at the ground level on all of this, uh, to be successful. Um, you haven't, my sense is you haven't felt that buy-in with capital planning in the past. And so we want to change that. Everybody wins. Um, we, we were mindful not to share the presentation because we haven't done a lot of thought about this. And if you came out and said something wildly different, we didn't want, we wanted you to say something wildly different. We're heartened that you really didn't, but, um, but we wanted to have that flexibility. So we will continue forward on the plan, the planning calendar for the council. All of this has already been out. Um, so we have, we have specific dates saved for this all through, uh, the month of June. Um, I know that there's some desire in council leaders that will talk more broadly about at least the next six months as well before we leave today. So there's still time to do that. We're ready to do that. But, but thank you, really appreciate it. And we want to especially call out, uh, Council President, Deputy Council President, the idea of the, you know, the goals and objective piece, like kind of like team is great.
Yeah, yeah. So that transitions really nicely into, hey, we always have a staff work plan and capital projects and, um, all of these work plans that we look at, it's the beginning of the year. So, um, all of that was in our packet. Um, I don't think there's a specific presentation or anything on this that was really up to us to look through. Um, so the first one is the citywide work plan, and so that covers, you know, all of our strategic plan, goal areas, mobility development, all of that. Um, I wanted to say thank you to staff to adding in the, uh, city council touch point column. I thought that was really useful in me being able to say, okay, when, that's almost like those, uh, milestones in a sense, um, that show us when are we doing our touch points and so we can do that evaluation. Did anybody else have any comments, questions, concerns on the work plan? Yes?
Um, I did. I noticed the, um, TODOC, um, which we've made somewhat significant, I should probably say majors, majorly significant progress in the past month or so, uh, is, is listed as major challenges. So I was wondering if there's anything new, um, that's happened that we're not aware of, or if that's just a, a description of the ongoing.
Well, we wanted it done, you know, four years ago, so. I think that's, you know, it's, it's hard once we've, once we've passed, you know, a certain milestone, when do you change it? Because this has been a, a billiard project for many years, but we are at a really good place. We remain in a great place with this project. So I still have, um, weekly or more than weekly meetings with the project team. Uh, we're, we're, uh, no, no major challenges since, you know, uh, the last action on this in December, so really, really good.
Good to hear, thank you.
So is the council, is the policy okay for us to reset this? Now that, so that it's, it's, there's no longer major challenges, that if it's on track from this point forward, and then if something happens, so that we glance at it, because otherwise it'll say major challenges.
And so.
A ribbon cut.
So, um, one of my earlier asks on, when, when we, we've been having these documents as briefings for a while now, and one of the things was that they, they did sometimes change, uh, because the goals would be reset for these long projects. And so my concern is just that we do need to have information about that it is four years, you know, behind, it's now on a new track, and that happens, but I don't want that to get lost, because otherwise it keeps telescoping out to the future and we lose track of that it's on the new track, which is actually quite behind. So, um, I, I think it's okay to reset, that, you know, this is one specific example, but I do want to have it documented in this that we have reset it as of, you know, today, January 28th.
Like within the narrative perhaps?
Yeah, within the narrative, and you've reset it because of events and that it's recorded.
Suzy, are you getting that for Gene?
I'm reading it right now. My battery died, apologies.
Oh. And again, we talked about reports being uploaded this report, and that this needs to be dynamic on the website.
Yeah.
Um, and I know that Gene and Dale are, are trumping at the bit to do more of that, um, but they, but they also know the importance of discussions like this and having something in front of you, so. Because I think then you can capture, and quite honestly, have more data fields, because we're, we're combined by just the sheer size of the piece of paper and how small the print can be. But I think if we were to, to add to this an established date, when did this first come on, when was this first added, you know, that'd be great to have, but then that's one more column we have to try to squeeze on the piece of paper.
So I had a few items on this, um, GD4B, which is Develop Code Amendments to Address Diversity of Housing. I appreciate that it says deliverables are expected in June 2023. I'd love to know when the next council touch point is. And then similarly, council touch point on the other Title 18, future update around parking, um, would be great to know on that. Um, and then I am very excited about the online utility billing being available in June. So excited, looking forward to how we publicize that to the community. So excited. Okay, what's the status for online business tax payments? So I'd love to get an update on what the next step is for online business tax payments. Because.
This is going to do it in two sentences or less?
Yes, um, we have some limitations right now with the software. This is something that we're going to have to support.
Okay, well, I appreciate that we're getting something for every residence, also businesses would be nice, but, you know. Okay, great. Anybody have anything else on the work plan? Great. Next document was the Capital Improvement Plan Project Report, and so that's going over all of the capital improvement plans or capital improvement projects that we have in the city. Um, anybody has, have any comments, questions, concerns? Okay, I'll get them to mine. Um, pavement management, um, all of that, last year's ceiling and overlays didn't really go so well, so I'm wondering what we're doing differently this year and when we'll get an update on it?
Well, didn't really go so well is a very broad statement. Um, the public work staff merely kills themselves on this. Um, and Ben and Ashwa are first among them, so.
It was an innovative idea. There were lots of things that we tried, the results, whether it was because of contractors or whatnot.
Well, what's our goal and what did we accomplish? That's how to frame that conversation.
Yeah, and, you know, there were different.
I mean, I, I, I think at the end of the day, we largely accomplished what we said. I think the process, the timing, uh, and the resources used were, were different than what we had hoped for. Um, the, the amount of staff time that it's taken us to deal with, uh, companies that are oversubscribed and understaffed has been significant. Um, Bennett spent more time in 2022 interviewing employees than he did working on pavement management. Uh, and that's not, doesn't help pavement management when he's busy replacing employees. Uh, my sense, Emily, is that we're much better off on staffing side on streets than we were nine, 10 months ago. So, uh, our hope is that this year it'll be less time spent interviewing employees, training employees, more time focused on getting out the, the projects. Uh, again, we had some problems with vendors and their act, the actual quality of their work. Uh, I think that can be attributed to vendors having the same problems we do, hiring staff that aren't properly trained to properly mix slurry appropriately. Um, we resolve many, if not all, of those issues. Uh, it took a cycle, I think. We were resolving 21 problems in 22, but I believe we came through by the end of 22 having that all resolved. So with staff having the time to put out the, uh, contract documents, uh, which is happening, I imagine, right now, or at least the preparations.
Correct, we're picking road segments right now.
Right, so, so that's all. So I, I think we're feeling fairly confident that the pieces are in place, that have been in place the last couple of years. So that's where we're at. But I think at the end of the day, we did what we said we were going to do, it just took a lot more energy and effort to actually get it done.
Yeah, yeah. Um, similarly, we have two pavement preservation projects on East Lakes Management Parkway and Southeast 43rd, and I'm just wondering if we have opportunities to kind of reevaluate what the pavement markings are there when we're doing that and maybe accomplish some protective bike lanes or other multimodal opportunities with that? Just throwing it out there.
Yeah, my guess is that's not part of the project as it's currently scoped.
That's correct, that's correct. These are, um, great funded, two large three projects, um, very focused.
I just figure if we're gonna tear up a roadway and why redo the same thing?
Yeah, it's not quite tearing up the roadway, it's kind of like grinding it down and getting it ready or maintenance thing. But I think one of the benefits that we now have that started with Bob here and continues with Emily there is we have engineering and operations under one house. And their activities, while they're sometimes different, are interrelated. Um, our desire would be to touch a road once and deal with those with maintenance and, I would have a call on enhancements or complete street state activities. They don't line up very well often because the pavement is failing and we do not have a capital project to do the kinds, the kinds of improvements you're talking about. But I hear you, and I think we have a better opportunity now that we have it under one house with one director.
Okay, Victoria?
Um, well, I was, I was looking for Hillside Park, it's currently on whatever track it's on, so that's, that's an example though of one that's been on different tracks and, um...
But this, but it has been, it has been on the fastest track that we've been able to have it for in the last two years.
Yeah.
That we have put more energy, effort, community meetings, um, planning staff, environmental consultants, uh, we could not do that project any faster. We wanted to.
Can I share a little story on that one too?
I want to, I, I wanted to say that it, I'm glad it's on there, but I also wanted to point out that it, it became green, um, so there was a history of it being that green.
I really want to thank, you know, council members who have spoken up for that older neighborhood for a long time. That is a, a real asset for that community. You know, when you open can or, you never know what you're going to see, but at one point we were, like, water heads with Department of Ecology in that they wanted us to actually contribute a million dollars to a fund that they would spend on other communities based on us working on our wetland mitigation issues, and we had to fight them back, no way. So, you know, that kind of worked. Yeah. Such a much bigger thing. So it's on track, we do not have to give them a million dollars to spend in other communities, and we get to proceed with the work. So it was surprising how difficult that tiny little hidden treasure has been, but, um, I'm glad it's back on track.
And how many community meetings, Jeff?
So during planning, so on, on a positive side, you notice the orange color isn't part of Hillside Park anymore. We're through planning and conceptual, but to get to that, we had, what, probably five neighborhood meetings to, to reach consensus, and that's a neighborhood that was at serious friction, uh, no playground or yes playground. So, uh, we reached community consensus, eighty, eighty-five percent of, of neighborhood respondents said, "We really liked the balanced approach you took."
Yeah.
Uh, there's fifteen percent that, a couple of them really, really loud, but we're, we're at consensus. And so again, to have Ecology saying, "You don't need to write us a check, we like your game plan of mitigating in the isocrypia core," right? We're making some really, really good progress.
Success will be when council member Mark shows us the drone footage just like that.
Yes.
That's, that's what we need.
That here is my eye.
Cause it's here in your eye. It's actually.
Okay, so sorry, I derailed this, but what I wanted to, what I actually wanted to flag was, um, I noticed that Locking Jacobs Creek Channel Enhancement Support is in the red. It's important for Kokoni, which is super important to the community and our neighborhood communities. And it talks there about needing additional funds for the project in early Q3, so potentially this is part of our conversations on capital, um, capital needs, but I did want to flag that one because it's red, and then it looks like from this that, um, you know, maybe we need to advocate at the state level for funding, or maybe we need to advocate for different wire eight funds, different funds to make this possible, but, um, I know Locking Jacobs Creek, very important for Kokoni, Kokoni really only have Habitat, our local Kokoni only have Habitat in Lakes Management, so super important that we do our part to preserve them. I want to flag that for council and probably be back, let's have more information about how to fund that.
Mm-hmm. What's the gap, John?
That's our project.
Oh, is it your project? What's the gap, Emily?
I don't know what the gap is at this moment. I think the staff is still trying to work with, um, various partners on this project and get clarity on what, um, other partners may be bringing to it, so I'd be happy to come back and share more information.
Well, while the legislature's in session, I mean, this is an opportunity to talk to Mark and Lisa, the capital budget leaders, and ask if there's any room in the budget for a budget proviso, you know, from some state funding.
So, I'm sure you also is.
Yeah. We gotta know what we're asking for.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think, let's, let's hear what Emily's team comes back as, you know, a lot of these ones that have multiple jurisdictions are complicated, but we need to have a specific ask.
Oh, definitely.
I don't know that money is our issue as much as coordination at this point in time.
The, the bit that I can recall is we were also trying to figure out exactly how much was going to come from traffic component in their budget as well, so I'd be grateful to leave a little bit more information.
Let me know how I can advocate for getting that done, super important one.
Yeah.
Um, on my list, I noticed in the Old Town Traffic Calming, it says PSC is installing streetlights. Is that just on that main thoroughfare where we did the, um...
Sunset.
Sunset. So additional lighting is part of the plan on Sunset and, uh, enhanced, not enhanced, but better marked crossings on Sunset. So those lights are in order, we're going to get them in a couple of months, who knows?
There, there's been a delay. And so I think those would be that as late as maybe summertime, you know, to be...
I just wasn't sure if that was going to be in the entire Old Town neighborhood, then I was going to say, well, shouldn't we consider sidewalks first? Should we talk to the community?
So the, the lighting plan, so, yeah, it's been a couple of years since we talked about this. The, the lighting was in specific, uh, additional lighting along Sunset at some of those dark areas where we really heard public comment saying, "You need to put more lighting here." So that was really the focus, is to be responsive to the community concerns that came up. Um, so we, you know, we did the improvement at Second and Bush, um, and the next step is that lighting. And we have, we ordered those lights a really long time ago, we're just, it's supply chain stuff. So, um, it's again, in response to specific community concerns that were raised.
Yeah, I remember those spots now that you mentioned.
Okay. Um, and then the last one I had is I noticed we're doing community center roof replacement. Have we considered solar?
Absolutely not. We just, we don't think solar makes any sense. Absolutely not. We don't think solar makes any sense. So we have, we have a grant kind of computer sound energy, but they will pay for it.
Fantastic.
All right.
Write it down. It's so good. Okay, um, anybody else?
Sorry. Too much coffee.
Yeah.
Or not.
Yeah, Barb with a random comment.
So um, I looked at the strategic plan, which I will admit I had not looked at for a while. And I just want to say that as I was going through it, it was just amazing to see how much we have done.
Yeah.
It's, you could just check, and check, and check, or even the broader statements I could think of projects within that had gotten done. So I just, you know, uh, I, I, well, first of all, the value of strategic planning is that it sets, you know, yes, exactly. You can call it, congratulations. Secondly, and I am not proposing this for twenty twenty-three, but uh, we probably are getting close to needing to renew the strategic plan. So, but congratulations to staff and everybody. Uh, it's amazing. I would commend to anybody to go back and look at the strategic plan and just count the number of things we've actually accomplished.
Thank you. That, that is awesome. Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think at this point, the last remaining item on our agenda is public comment. And so we have one individual in the room, we'll see.
Evan, for, will we be able to talk about some of the other thirty thousand foot issues?
Yeah, actually, why don't you do that before we go to public comment? And yes, we have at least one person online with uh, public comments. I see M. Go ahead, Wallace.
So the council president and deputy council president wanted to at least spend a couple of minutes talking about what else is going on? What else will you see before you, um, over, let's say, the next six months? So first and foremost is Title eighteen. Um, Title eighteen is wrapping up at a planning policy. It will go to the council's uh, planning development environment committee in February. Um, it looks like it will get through that committee in February, although I don't say that with a hundred percent certainty. Uh, which Ben means that it will come back uh, to the council in March. We have it for you, the whole uh, scheduled. We'll have a public hearing, so we'll likely have two touches at the city council. So that is coming to an end for those of you who are not on the council committee. I mean, a ridiculous, tremendous amount of effort from the council committee itself, from the planning policy committee, from city staff, from members of the community. This has been an enormous lift. Uh, but it is coming to a conclusion and you will see it during the month of March. Um, as you look on, that's point one. Point two, as you look on the planning calendar, there's a ton of stuff on facilities, city office facilities. So um, Autumn will be here um, with the planning team, uh, talk about city office facilities. We've done a, I think, a pretty good job of foreshadowing, uh, some pieces of this that, um, you know, city hall. Um, there are going to be issues with that. The other big thing you need to be thinking about is city hall northwest. Um, the city clerk has done, has done, I mean, about, about a year ago, I guess. We, we were, we're largely out of the building. Uh, but since then, uh, the city clerk and her staff and consultant staff, which she has just lost at the end of this week after, how many months did you have them? Over a year plus of scanning all the documents that resided in that building. Uh, we are largely done with that. And when we are done, we will have one of the most impressive municipal records, uh, digitization projects for city under fifty thousand in America.
In the country.
Uh, it is, it is just astounding. But with all that said, the building is about ready to be disposed of. And so we need the council's guidance, direction, thoughts during the first half of this year about disposition of city hall northwest. Um, largely separate from everything else we're talking about. And so that is something to keep an eye on as well as you're thinking about things. We are going to come back to the council with the equity framework. We have done um, some soul searching. I think it's safe to call it soul searching in this very word, um, about where we are with that. I think we're at a point, we've come back and forth to the council where we are with that. So that's an important piece uh, coming up as well over the, the next uh, six months. Uh, I think those are pretty much the. Who, who are you going to?
Emily. Sorry.
Emily, what about, oh, well, we've also foreshadowed staffing, because that's what you're talking about. We've also, I think, done a good job.
The C I P, all of that is gonna.
Yes, yes, yes. I mean, this is, these are things we didn't talk about today. Things we didn't talk about today. Uh, but yes, the C I P is a big part of the staffing for public works. Um, you know, we, we don't feel comfortable with the staff memory that we've got. Um, we may not be comfortable on the park side either, but we're still in the process. We, Jeff hopefully has a, a good, a good person that they're talking to. Um, but we know right now that we're not comfortable where we are with public works. So we will come, I think, to service the safety of parks, talk about that in the month of February. Is that what it's scheduled, Emily?
We'll be coming um, to committee in February.
And committee in February, so.
Going to um, which one do we decide, a relative?
We, we'll.
We'll figure it out, but it, but that's also coming. We take all this very seriously and uh, you know, Emily has done a tremendous job coming on here, looking very methodically, using data, which I don't think we have used data properly in evaluating the resources we spend on capital projects. So we now have done a better job of that and I think can make asks that are informed. So thank you, council president. Those are the big, big things other than the stuff we've talked about today. That's what the next six months of your city council lives look like. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, so we have a preview of what's coming up, lots of things to touch upon. Uh, but we still need to close up this retreat and hear from the community members who have been so kind to wait through. So do we have anyone in the room who wants to make comments? Let's know.
Yes, I think.
Yes? Come on up, Julian.
I think if you speak, if you speak, I think I'll.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll keep an eye on that.
Hello, my name is Julian, just a resident of Issaquah. Um, this was a nice, um, nice retreat, uh, just for the public safety levy that might be proposed or will be proposed on the twenty-three ballot. Um, I think the focus should be, you know, more, it should be wider than just facilities if we are to put it on the twenty-three ballot. I think it's crucial to, you know, the field, the neighborhood health. And things that make sure into that as well. Um, otherwise I don't think I could support just a simple facilities levy. So I just feel wider, um, and this uh, holistic approach to public safety is important. Thank you.
Thank you. And then that's the only member we have in person. Um, I know I see C M. I assume that's Connie Marsh online. And then do we have anybody else after that? Okay, great. Can we give Connie ability to speak and?
Yes, Connie, you've been unmuted.
Okay, do I get to be video or I'm just a voice?
You should, you should be able to turn video on.
Now I just, I think I just got it. Yes, here I, here, here I am, nowhere. I'm actually out working today, but um, I've been trying to listen off and on. And here you go. So one of the things that you rarely talk about is technology. And that's one of the big things that we need for improvement. And one of those even larger things is G I S mapping, which is going to be a baseline component for our, our planning and our building. And so I think we need to ensure that that gets a voice. It does not have a committee that guides it. And we rarely get presentations on it. So then, on the criteria breakdowns from last year, where we tried to go through criteria for uh, the C I P and T I P. The bigger breakdown was when criteria were created and then the project lists were brought back. The project list did not get uh, to the goals that were being hoped for. But there was very little voice to say, we need to change this. We need to change this. It's not right. So I would ask that there actually be quite a bit of time at the end, after the criteria are created and the projects then are pushed out for people to say, wow, that is not what we expected and we, we think it needs to be changed for this year, not in the future. And then for the goals and outcomes chart, you do need to remember that goals and outcomes chart came with struggles, which one of the largest ones was, do the goals and outcomes have to match the existing comprehensive plan goals? And we're going to be going through comprehensive intensive plan updates. So I think that awkwardness needs to be addressed from the very beginning and that might save you like four meetings. Um, I, the, let's see. Find the fundings. Oh, uh, the one thing I didn't hear you talk about was somebody's got to say, how much money do we think we're going to be getting from the outside and what do those projected funding streams look like? And I don't know that we have anybody in the city that provides that sort of analysis because while we talk about funding shortages, um, huge component of that, especially for capital projects is what grants are we going to be able to get and potentially what state funding could come our way? And so do we have staff for that? And last, I, you know, public safety, public safety, what the heck? So maybe do a survey and ask people what public safety is to them and what resonates with the majority of people before you decide you think you know what that means and what they would support. Um, I think you all feel like you know what you would support, but that may not be what the public would support. And I think if you do that early, before it goes to a commit, the committees, I think you'd have a better chance of getting something that people might pass. So I thought it was an interesting conversation. You all had thoughtful ideas. And maybe yet again, another reiteration of how we're going to prioritize the C I P will get us better results. I don't know. I've been through it like six times and we always seem to sort of end up in the same place, which is this is not quite right, but who knows? Maybe the sixth time is the charm. Thanks.
Thanks for joining us while you're uh, out and about and all of that. Um, any other public online? Okay. So at that point, you know, we have three more minutes. We really, we have just.
Three minutes?
We.
She's, she's chatty.
You can give it back to us?
Yes, I'm, I'm thinking we're gonna do that. So uh, does the administration have what they need? Does council have any other questions or are you guys all just really tired of us at this point?
No, just happy.
Thank you for organizing.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for the structure you guys provided and the early information you sent out to council. I think we have really good conversations when you do that. We love hanging out with you guys. We just develop these things because we just hang the brainstorming sessions.
So May sixth is your next one.
May?
And so May sixth will be the results of the community survey, because that's autumn ready, almost ready to go out on the street, right? February will always be the goal and we're pretty close to that. So you'll have the results of the community survey and we will talk about forms measures. We'll have all the twenty-two measures. Dale will be here and we'll walk through all of that. Last, so beginning of the budget, mid-year, mid-biennium budget process starts on May sixth.
Okay, so you guys have everything you need from this?
Thank you.
And we'll look forward to what we get back for the February sixth meeting. Excellent. Thanks, everybody.
Good job, everybody.